...meeting please come to order. We're here for the purpose of board orientation.
Okay, this evening I'd like to introduce attorney Barrett Christina from the New Hampshire School Boards Association who will lead us to two sections of tonight's manual. The first one is school boardsmanship and the second part is some comments and clarification on the right to know law. Barrett, welcome.
Thank you very much Leon and I want to thank the Oyster River School Board for having me come out and do this sort of boardsmanship training session for you. Before I start into my presentation for the new school board members, I just want to tell you a little bit about our organization. Again, we're the New Hampshire School Boards Association. We're a nonprofit organization made up of school boards across the state. We provide a variety of services to our members, training among them, legal information and advice with me as staff attorney, policy work, legislative lobbying. We do administrative searches across the state as well too. So if you haven't already, please check out our website at N H S B A dot org. It may be listed on some of the materials as well too. We have a variety of information on there, user guides about right to know law, legislative updates and legislative bulletins, a lot of good information for school boards on there. So please check out the site and if you have any questions or can't find anything after tonight's meeting, certainly feel free to give me a call. So moving on to the information, I know that Leon forwarded to you a variety of documents that I sent to him. There should be maybe, I don't know, four, five, six documents in your packets for tonight's meeting. The ones that I'm basically going to be working off of for the first part of my presentation is the one called 2012 Roles and Responsibilities. And the one that I'm going to work on in conjunction with that is the one that you just received as a handout tonight that's titled Four Key Roles for School Boards. I apologize beforehand, there's probably going to be a lot of back and forth and cross referencing between these two documents. The other thing that I want to just sort of lay out on the table too before I begin, my role here is not to come and lecture to the school board and not to come and tell you how to do your jobs. The School Boards Association, we do a variety of training across the state. So I do across the state, I do probably 20, 25 of these at school boards all across the state in any given year. So what I'm hoping to do, and my goal for the orientation, is to have go through the material a little bit, recommend some best practices with the School Boards Association recommends in terms of your role as a school board as a whole, your role as an individual school board member. And then if you have any questions as we go along, stop and ask. For those of you that I know have come to some of the training sessions that the School Boards Association has put on before, I hope you realize that my style is again, not a lecture or not for me to, you know, be, you know, a teacher of any sorts, but rather to engage in a conversation with the board, to sort of address what's on your mind, to hear your questions and concerns. So before I begin, I kind of want to just go around. I understand that there's been some significant turnover on the board with the last election. If you could just maybe tell me your name, how long you've been on the board, I think I know the new four board members, and maybe just a quick snippet as to why you wanted to run for the school board and what you think maybe you bring to the table as a new school board member. Just to start, I take it you're the student rep?
Yeah, I'm John Parsons. I'm the student rep. Obviously, I ran to the board because I want the students' voice to be heard. What we do here directly impacts me as well as all of my peers. So I believe it's important that our side of the story gets heard since the board is really here for the good of the students. So what I bring to the table is someone who's willing to listen to both you and the students and someone who will work tirelessly to make that happen.
Nice.
Megan.
I'm Megan Turnbull. I already know you.
Yeah, good man.
I've been on the board for a year. I have two more years in my term.
Okay.
And, you know, I have two young children in the district and, you know, I think education is one of the most important foundations of our society. I care deeply about it. I think there's a lot of potential for excellence. You know, we have demonstrated potential and future potential in our district and I'm hoping to be part of that. What do I bring to the table? Well, very detail oriented, very thorough, I like to do a lot of research and try to come here to deliberate effectively with a background. And I'd like, just like John, I do respect diverse opinions and views and I try to think about that in my work.
Thanks.
I'm Ed Charlet and I've been on the School Board a week.
[laughing]
And I don't have a direct connection with the school board, but I'm living in Madbury, interested in what's going on in town and in the community and got interested in the school board with all of the different dynamics going on in the school board and my interest in making sure that Oyster River keeps up its excellent school system that I think it already has. And I think I bring my, I'm a family practitioner, I bring a lot of broad experience to the board and I think have done a lot in my career kind of with listening and communication skills.
Thanks.
I'm Maria Barth. I represent Lee. My two sons went through the Oyster River school system. My grandchildren are now students. I bring some experience having moved away after my children graduated to Kittery where I served 11 years on the school committee. And I like planning, I like problem solving, and I like consensus, and I like peace and quiet.
You're on the wrong.
I was just saying again.
So that's what brought me here.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Newkirk. I have a one-year replacement appointment at large. I've been involved in education for my entire career. I teach at the University of New Hampshire and directed first year writing and done a lot of work with literacy, a lot of work with teachers, teacher development. And I think that's partly what I bring, you know, and I've had a number of teachers and, you know, teach certainly in the English department, language arts, elementary school reading, you know, come through our summer programs. So that kind of, I think, intimacy with the school district. My three kids went through it with, I think, great experiences. So I think that's what I bring is concern for literacy, concern for teacher development. And that's what I'd like to be involved with as much as I can.
I'm Al Holland. I am the Durham rep and like this other group, I've only been here a week. I have three kids in the district and so that gives me a vested interest in making sure the schools are working at their best. What I bring, well, I straddle a couple of roles. I was a former high school teacher, so I have a pretty extensive background in education. I've been a really active volunteer in the Oyster River schools, so I have a pretty good idea what's going on in our schools. And since I have kids here, I'm interested in how our programs will affect my kids as well as everyone else in the district.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi Krista.
I've been on, this is my third year on the board.
You're the senior member.
Yeah, that's funny how that works. I have three children in the district, one with an IEP and one in accelerated program. So, and all three of my children are second grade and under.
Wow.
So obviously I have a vested interest in this district because I'm here for the long run. And I also come from a two-parent working family. So I think I represent a large portion of our community that doesn't have the opportunity to get out and speak at school board meetings necessarily. And so I think my voice is important. That's all I have to say.
Hi Barrett.
Hi Mary.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
This is my, beginning of my second year on the board. I'm in my first term. I'm also at large. I have a daughter in seventh grade, a son who's graduating and a son in college. What I uniquely bring to the district is having lived all around the country. My children have been enrolled in school systems in California, Western Massachusetts, here. I think that gives me a pretty, a big feeling.
Thank you. Whenever I'm doing sort of a boardsmanship or roles and responsibilities training, I lead off most of my trainings like that. I'd like to get a sense of what your background is, what you think you bring to the table, you know, how long you've been on the board, you know. This is perhaps the youngest in terms of years of experience that I've ever dealt with. So I think we'll be able to make that work though, you know, in the sense of what the School Boards Association is able to provide in terms of recommendations and some best practices. As you can imagine, you know, when I ask why do people run, you know, 90% of the people either have kids in the district or had kids in the district, you know, that's obviously the most prevalent reason and that makes sense. Former educators, you know, is also another common reason. Moving to some of the documents, I'm going to reference again, a couple of documents here. I wanted to take some notes when you were telling me, you know, sort of why you ran and what you thought you brought to the table. And I keep some of these in mind. Potential for excellence, Megan mentioned. Ed mentioned maintaining the excellent school system. Maria mentioned liking problem solving and building consensus. Tom, you mentioned your background in education and three kids that went through the system. Former teacher, an active volunteer. Krista, you have kids in the district, one, you know, with an IP and one in accelerated program. And Anne comes from sort of a diverse educational background, if you will. All of those things collectively, if we look on paper, I mean, they seem to lead to people that have, you know, the background necessary to do what you want to do within your school system. The question then is how do we get there, right? And what do we do and how do we take these sort of individual skills and traits, if you will, to meld them into a collective body of the school board to maintain the excellent school system that everybody seems to want to maintain? Let's move to page two of the handout. Four key roles of the board. And this is where I'm going to cross-reference the one that was not included in your packet. The first role of the school board, vision, setting the vision for the educational community. The second, structure, establishing the structure and environment to implement the vision. Three, accountability, establishing academic standards to achieve the vision, assessing the performance and formulating a plan to help marginal or failing students. And four, advocacy, being an advocate for the schools and students in your district. If we look at these aspects of what we see as the four key roles of the school board, and the handout that you received goes into a little bit more depth in those, which I'm not going to read that for you, you can read those, you know, on your own. We have certain mechanisms within the school district and certain tools within the school district. Hopefully you'll see as I'm doing this presentation, if I'm doing it right anyway, you'll see sort of the intersection between best practices and what the law states about the school board's role in establishing these four key roles and meeting these four key roles. Turn to page three for a second as well. So of the, I'm sorry, the one that's labeled the 2012 Roles and Responsibilities. One quick note, on page three, it says the board member. Ideally, that should say the school board on top there, just so there isn't any confusion as to what is within the purview of an individual board member and what is the purview of the board as a whole. Just, I want to read through this quick, this list on page three, the bullet points somewhat quickly and then make a point jumping through some other documents. Develop and adopt policies that define how the district will operate. You're going to see me coming back to that a lot. Hire the chief executive or the superintendent. Plan, set goals and evaluate. Approve the budget. Establish policy that governs salaries and conditions of employment. Set policies surrounding instructional programs. Evaluate school housing needs. Set policy that guides the actions of administration. Communicate with various constituencies. Advocate to the children. Adjudicate and investigate. Now, quickly, I know everybody here can read, what word kept popping up there? Anybody to say it. What seemed to be the theme that was throughout all these bullet points?
Policy.
Thank you, policy, exactly. If there's anything that I try to convey in the roles and responsibilities training is that the school board is by and large a policymaking board. I think you're going to find sooner rather than later, and probably tonight, just by looking at your agenda for the rest of the evening, that the board's primary role and primary function is policy. Not just as a matter of best practice, but also as a matter of law, the New Hampshire law, which I'll show you in a minute. And also as a matter of, when we look at the four key roles of the school board, vision, structure, accountability and advocacy, the tool or the mechanism that school boards have at their disposal in order to create a vision, in order to establish a structure, in order to implement accountability and in order to advocate for parents and taxpayers and children and whatever else you advocate for as a school board member. Policy is your tool that does that. So again, if we're looking on page three, the school board, all those bullet points, policy was the recurring theme that came through here. Now, on the same document, the one that's labeled 2012 Roles and Responsibilities, if you could jump to page 13, it's the second to the last page. It's titled Part ED 303, Duties of School Boards. Part ED 303 is sort of code in legal speak for Department of Education Rule Section 303, as established by the New Hampshire Department of Education. I'm going to go through this somewhat quickly, but I think it'll make the point and ties back into what we talked about on page three of what the school board's primary roles and responsibilities are. ED 303.01, each school board shall A, adopt policies necessary and desirable to control and effectuate recruitment, employment, evaluation and dismissal of teachers and other employees. B, adopt policies necessary and desirable to control and effectuate the purchase of equipment, supplies, services and may delegate to the superintendent the authority to make financial commitments in accordance with such policy. Jumping down to G, in consultation with the superintendent and in accordance with the statute and rules of the state board of education, determine the educational goals of the district, develop long-term plans and identify measurable and attainable short-term objectives. I, adopt a rule to ensure that there shall be no unlawful discrimination. Well, what's a rule? Another word for a policy at a school board level, isn't it? And then jumping over to page 14, J, establish a policy on sexual harassment. I think that in a nutshell is the perfect example of what rule, what the roles and responsibilities of a school board are. Not just within, you know, the context of what we think the best practices are, but it ties in nicely with that. When we look at what the state has told you what your role is, what your role is, excuse me, in the rules of the Department of Education. Adopting policies, adopting policies, determine the educational goals. Well, how is that done? Through policy. Adopt a rule to ensure there's no discrimination, sexual harassment, et cetera. And Kristin and Anne, I don't know if you're on the policy committees here, but I'm sure just in your couple of years on the school board, you've probably seen hopefully that policies are a recurring theme that comes forth with, you know, every board, every meeting. You're either establishing new policy, you're revising existing policies. In a pre-conversation Leon and I had before the meeting started, they're going through the policy manual, you know, they need to be updated. Some haven't been looked at in a few years, laws change. You know, the board's primary role is a policymaking board. In addition to the policies that have been established just through these rules, there are other places in statute and federal, both federal and state law, that dictate school boards need to have a policy. Everybody's familiar with the bullying policy that was in the news a couple of years ago. There's a new law that came into effect in January about allowing parents the right to object to specific course material. Everybody's familiar with that. We sent out a sample policy on that. You know, I've been with the School Boards Association about five or six years now. And when I started, there were about 40 policies that were required by law. Now, I think we're up to 48 or 49 policies that are required by law. So anybody that pays attention to, you know, what's going on in the state of education, both on a local level, state level, federal level, even if you pay attention just tangentially, you realize that there are more and more edicts coming down on school boards. And that's always about policy, isn't it? It's always, you know, that the board has to adopt policy on bullying, sexual harassment, specific course material, parents having opt-out provisions, et cetera. So if we look at the fact that there are, you know, significant policies that are required by law, to say nothing of the policies your district has in place that your administrators need to deal with on a day-to-day basis, you know, we keep coming back to the main theme that the board is a policymaking board, is able then to establish the vision, create the structure, enforce accountability and advocate for your various constituencies. Questions, concerns Another point, just to sort of hammer that point home a little bit too. In my role of staff attorney for the School Boards Association, I also do all the policy work that I know our other board members have seen. You know, we issue policy reviews, I do policy reviews for individual districts. I'm guessing probably half of my time as an attorney representing the school boards across the state is done doing policy work. So if we extrapolate that, you know, to the many school boards across the state, I think it's a pretty good representation of what we think a school board, a school board's role is on the local level. You know, if I'm reviewing the policies and getting policy questions, you know, from various districts, that's what districts are doing, that's what boards are doing and that's what, you know, again, is the primary role and function of a school board. So that covers sort of the first aspect of the boardsmanship. You know, your role as a policymaking board, I take it you have a policy committee? Is there, no, the board handles that as a whole?
Well, we, I guess we're in the transition mode.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get the policies in place that comply with the law.
Yep.
And then the idea is to have your organization review.
Yep.
And make recommendations. And then we should put in place a cycle for next year for periodic review.
Yep.
And at that time, the board may very well reinstitute a policy committee to review with the, because right now, a lot of it is going back to putting a structure together. And I'll be presenting the major recommendations to the board in the month of April and May and then it'll go to your office and then they can start that cycle.
Sounds good.
It's just that when you get into that, it gets, it's very consuming and it gets bogged down into a lot of editing and changes. And as you do that, you, sometimes you create a hole you can't get out of. And so we're just trying to get a structure in place so that it's manageable. I guess that's the thing that we're going to want to come back to.
Well, before I get to your question or comment Megan, just to let you know that the School Boards Association can certainly help with that. You know, I know Leon and I, we've talked about a variety of policies over the last year or so. You know, a large function of my work again is policy. Questions about policy, about how to go through the process, about what you want in your specific policy, that's what the School Boards Association is here for. So by all means, contact me if you have questions about either that process or the policy itself.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit, because I did serve on the policy committee until it was disbanded. And when I first joined the board, I did look through our policies and we faced some significant challenges. We have policies, you know, that have not been updated back to the seventies.
Yep.
Okay. We have policies that contradict other existing policies. We have policies that are, include language that is vague and unable to implement. You know, it's subject matter that is, is a value judgment and it's difficult to implement some of those policies. So we are mired in that. That's of deep concern to me. The other thing that I would like to ask for your guidance on, and this is more, we have a policy about how we go about creating policy.
Yeah.
And that policy, I find to be interesting, to say the least. So I would like to understand how highly effective school boards actually affect policy. How do they make edits to existing policies?
Right.
How do they introduce new policies to do the work that needs to be done?
Yeah.
I think that would be of very good value. And then, we then would have to deal with that particular policy that is
Sure.
Causing policies
Sure.
To be done that way.
Policy, it's, it's not fun. It's tedious. You'll recognize that sooner rather than later for the new board members. There's no magic bullet in terms of process and how it should be done. Every board that I've encountered does it a little differently than the prior board that I've talked to or the next board that I know I'll talk to. A lot of boards have a policy committee that they'll review either our language or the recommendations that we put out, or they'll review their existing policy. And they'll make changes and then they bring it to the board as a whole for a first reading. And there's no legal requirement that you do a first reading and a second reading. That delay is so people can sleep on it, so your administrators can contact either me or an attorney and, you know, get feedback as to, you know, so board members can get back with questions as to why does it say this, why does it say that. Other boards have the administration give it sort of that first read in once through, so by the time it gets to the board, it's already in, you know, I don't want to say final draft, but, you know, the first time it gets to the board, hopefully it's, you know, it's ready to move through the process barring any, you know, outlandish questions or other questions that really need addressing. At some point, you know, getting consensus is not always going to be easy, you know, especially if we're looking at establishing rules and protocol and standards regarding vision and structure and accountability, because, you know, we've got seven different people and administrators, we're going to have perhaps differing ideas about those sorts of things. At some point, we sort of have to reach a consensus and maybe move forward. You know, if there are questions about amending policies, let me know, because I think a lot of the policies that, you know, to agree, it's twofold. You know, obviously all the policies that the School Boards Association puts out are legally, they're legally compliant. You know, there's nothing wrong with that. But we also have to put out a sample in sort of a one-size-fits-all mode, because, you know, we represent Manchester and we represent small districts up north too. Some of the shorter policies, the policies that are required by law, I think by and large, the language can remain intact to a degree. So, so long as everybody's in agreement, that may, those may be able to move forward a little bit quicker than some of the other ones where you are establishing, for lack of a better phrase, philosophy of the school district that maybe, you know, depends on who's on the board and, you know, what you want the philosophy of the district to be. The other aspect, and it sounds like this hasn't happened, is I recommend that board, that every policy be reviewed at least every three to five years. So once you get a policy that is, you know, a policy manual or book that's in place, that everybody's happy with, you, either committee or administrative function, you get on a regular review where somebody is at least, you know, reading through the policy every three to five years to make sure to either catch things that aren't right, to catch process and procedures that may have changed, to say, well, you know, the policy says this, but, you know, it was enacted in 1994 and maybe the values of the community have changed since then. So if you get on a review cycle every three to five years, that's ideal. And then look for the updates that the School Boards Association puts out too. We do our, our spring policy update and our, our fall policy update. I've tried to limit those in size the last few years where I keep it manageable. I mean, I know it doesn't do anybody a service if I'm sending you 20 policies all at once that I think need to be updated in the next six weeks.
A follow-up, this is, sorry, I just think it's important we talk about this. One of the things that, when I first looked at our policies, I saw we had policies and then we had policies dash R, which are procedural.
Yep.
Can you, I think it would be helpful for you to define the, what that is.
Sure.
And so we understand.
Sure.
And use them appropriately.
Policy, I think the best way for me to explain this is, is policy is generally going to be broader, your 30,000-foot view. gonna be broader, your thirty-thousand-foot view within the district. I mean, unless the law requires that certain element of the policy, then it, but it's another story. And, you know, policy is, again, sort of the broad aspect of what the, of the philosophy, if you will, of the district. The administrative regulations that accompany those policies sort of fill in the gaps, if you will. Places where the policy needs a procedure in order to be implemented, places where the policy needs protocol in order to be implemented, places where a law may state that, you don't, the law may not state that you need a policy on a particular issue, but it may state, if we look at some of the, I think a better way to explain this, jump to pages ten and eleven of the one, again, that says two thousand twelve roles and responsibilities. This, again, part ED three oh two, again, Department of Education rules three oh two, duties of the superintendent. I didn't highlight this. Okay, here we go. Look on the top of page eleven, sub-paragraph F. This states that the superintendent shall provide, develop, and implement procedures to achieve educational objectives within the school district or district within the SAU. The educational objectives are gonna be your policy statements, as established by the board, which gets back to the vision and structure and accountability. But, you know, we need procedures in order to implement these sorts of things. By and large, those are administrative, and administrative function for a variety of reasons. One, your superintendent, your administrators are the ones who are in the building sort of on, you know, on a day-to-day basis, and they know, you know, how a form needs to fill out in order, you know, in order to order office supplies. They're gonna know how a form needs to be filled out in order to comply with, you know, say, bidding, bidding requirements that you may have for whatever maintenance or across the building. Those sort of day-to-day things that the administration needs in order to carry out their function generally are left to regulations. How those are developed and the manner in which those are developed varies, again, district to district. Some boards I've worked with have complete faith in their, in their, in their administration and their superintendent, and they say, you go ahead and develop the procedures, put in place what you need to get done. Other boards that I've known have said, go ahead and develop them, we wanna give them a once-through, you know, before they become, you know, official and play official regulations of the district. And other boards that I've worked with are involved in creating them to the extent that they're involved in creating the policy as well, too. I think sort of a hybrid works best. I think you sort of let your administration develop them, because, again, they're gonna have this sort of day-to-day experience and knowledge to know what needs to go and what you're do, already doing within your district. That said, I think it's a good idea for the board to at least lay their eyes on it, you know, before it's officially either approved or adopted, either by the board or the administration, whatever your policy may state on that. You know, I just, I think it makes sense for the board to know what the procedures are in the district that are being adopted and implemented. So, if you get questions from constituents, if you get questions at board meetings, you know, you at least have some background as to, you know, you can say, well, you know, board at least looked at this and gave its approval, you know, in nineteen ninety-nine or whatever it was. Whoever wants to...
I just had a question, question about, maybe this is background, that there was a policies committee at one time, and then that was disbanded, is that...
Yeah, I think, can I... So, speaking to what Barrett spoke to first, just so you understand, I just pulled one up that's a really good example of what he was explaining. It's IJ O A, which is field trips and excursions. IJ O A, the policy starts, field trips are designated to stimulate student interest inquiry and provide opportunities for intellectual, social, and physical development. It goes on to describe, you know, what the educational purpose of field trips and excursions are. Policy IJ O A dash R starts like this, which you'll see right away. Educational field trips shall be planned and conducted in accordance with the following guidelines. One, the teacher shall review the educational value of the field trip, blah, blah, blah. Like, it gives you the itemized, this is what you're gonna do before you go on a field trip. And I just pulled that one up because I, I know that that one is a really good example of what the difference between the two policies are. Just for a background on the policy committee, I sat on the policy committee for two years. And then I sat with Lee and went through the rest of it, and Wendy, to get it through. And I think it, you'll notice, if you pull up our policies or ask someone for an old policy binder that's clearly no longer valid anymore, we don't have forty-nine policies. We have like five hundred or something like that. I don't know how many we have. We have a lot. It's about this big. When you print it all out and plop it on the table, it could break the table. And David's sat on the policy committee for years. He can attest to how many policies we have as well. But, the problem with the policy committee and the review process was that policy sections A, B, and C got reviewed a lot. Because we start over every year, and we review those, and then we get lost in the middle. And so, last year, we actually finished the end of the policies, which, to the, the policies in IJ and K that we went through seriously hadn't been touched since nineteen seventy-something, because they're at the end, and they're little sections, and nobody ever gets to those sections. But the way that we normally reviewed it as a board is, literally, we would beat this, every policy with a stick. We would send it out to everybody in the administration, in the, in the staff, in everything that would even remotely have input on the policy. And we try to get as much input as we could from parents, teachers, administration, whoever we could on the policy. And then it would come to the policy committee, and then we'd beat it more, and then we'd send it back out to people, and then it would come back to the policy committee, and then we'd send it to the board. So, it was kind of, you know...
Long.
Yeah. And it was drawing out the process more than it needed to be drawn out. So, we decided to disband the policy committee, give all the policies to Lee, so that he could get the feedback from the administration and the teachers, and then just bring it to the board, just to get through the policy, policy manual, because otherwise, this process that we were having wasn't working, because it was literally taking months to do a section of policies. And we just don't have that kind of time. So, we did manage to get through the policy book, but there's still, like Megan said, there are lots of policies in there that I don't know when they were reviewed. I don't know, you know, 'cause a lot of ones that we went through, we would get to a policy, and we're like, yeah, that one's closed, so let's just go to the next one, because you don't have time to delve into the details of every single policy. But in all honesty, it needs to be delved into. It's just, you have to take your priorities, 'cause you've got the ones that Barrett's sending down that legislation says you have to have, which you don't have anything. And then you have ones that are like, say, Todd Allen says, you know, this policy is in our book, and we really wanna make a change to it, because we really wanna have this happen instead. Then we direct our attention to that one, and you're bouncing all over the place, so you never actually get through our vision.
I just say, you know, just, may I? One of the, I mentioned earlier that I found very troubling when I looked at the policies were that there were so many things that would be almost impossible to implement. And then we have a lot of regulation policies that are not followed. And so, if they're not applicable or they're not current, they need to be either removed, updated, you know, and that's, when you have a lot of those, you know, but I don't know how many ours we have in general. But I think that, you know, for example, the one that Krista just read, I have, I mean, I think that one we, is a recent one we did this past year, but there are ones that, you know, maybe are five years old that aren't being followed. And, you know, to, you know, in the spirit of transparency, that is the best view that the general public has into the work and how it's being conducted. So, I find that to be of great concern, and, you know, I think that we need to really look at how we're gonna resolve that issue.
Yeah.
If I could just give an update on this thing, we're, Wendy and I are kinda, I mean, what's happened is that most of these policies have already been vetted. They've gone out to staff, and one of the things we've found out is that sometimes, if these policies are developed at the higher level, the people who are responsible for implementing don't know about them. So, we're trying to look at a process so that, for example, if something's dealing with health, the school managers see it and give their comments, right? So, we've tried to incorporate that and do an initial review, and we're not in bad shape. We focus, first of all, on what was required by law, and there are few, there's just a couple more that we'd have to put in and bring before the board to do that. And the other piece is that there are a number of policies that need to be recoded, because the codes have changed.
Yeah.
So, we're under the old code. So, I'm gonna have to bring that forward to say, well, here are these policies, here's the code, now change this code.
Something like that can be done in one fell swoop, in one motion.
Well, we have, which brings an interesting point. Our present policy on revisions calls for two readings of most policies. And I understand when something has a new policy, but my past practice has been usually when there's a revision, it's only needed one reading.
Okay.
And I don't know what yours is.
It varies. I mean, you know...
Because it gets to be a time-consuming piece.
Right.
And, and the same with rescinding a policy, because there's, there are a number of them that need to be eliminated.
Yeah.
Because they're just not applicable anymore. So, I've got those identified to bring before the board.
Okay.
But then I've developed a three-year cycle so that we can get to what Krista is dealing with.
Good.
And at that point, I mean, the board can decide what they wanna do, whether or not they wanna re-implement a committee, or how they wanna approach this thing. What I've found that works well is that particularly when there are new policies, it's good to involve the board when they're just a revision process, updating, sometimes administrators can help.
Yeah.
And move that process along.
Good.
So, can I just, so the process is, you're, you're doing a review now, and then you're going to come to us with a set of recommendations for revision or, you know, elimination or whatever, and then we'll vote on that as a committee?
Yes.
And then there'll be a process that'll go forward that may involve...
Yeah, then I'm gonna send the whole bundle.
All five hundred policies.
For a review. Did we miss something? Is there something that, from a language perspective, are we off? Do they do a review? Then we'll come back and add with their comments. And then with that cycle that we have in place, we can look at their comment. And if there's some things that are blurring omissions, we can deal with very rapidly. But then we're gonna be on a, on a, on a constant review cycle.
And my question with that today, gonna flag them, flag the policies and then stagger it so we can, so it isn't a five hundred policy bundle, we're getting like little lice.
You're only gonna get, you're only gonna get what you need to deal with.
Yeah.
Okay. The ones that are, are okay, I don't think I need to bring them forward. But the other piece that is evident is that, and I've spoken with our tech people with this, Danielle and some of the people in tech office, the manner in which we post our policies on our web is very difficult to read.
We have a service that can help you with that.
And so, while we're looking at, what I've had before is usually, I've uploaded them in a PDF file.
Yeah.
Where they're linked, and they look by section, and they all appear. So, I'm working with the tech folks right now to move all our policies up that way, so then when you go to the policy, you're gonna be able to see the complete index.
Right.
And link to that section that you want. Right now, you have to do searches, and you can't see them very well. It's very discouraging to go through that. And so, it needs to be more user-friendly. And so, we're working on that piece as well.
Good.
If there is a policy on how to write policies, I think we need to make sure that that's flexible enough to deal with what we're doing. So, maybe that should be first.
Good point.
I like that.
Any other policy questions since we're on that topic? So, board's primary role, policy, then I think we've, we've covered that enough, too. Another part of sort of the, the roles and responsibilities training that I like to make sure is addressed to is the role of the individual board member versus the role of the, of the board as a whole, as an entity. I don't know if it's in... Yep, here we go. Page five, again, of the, of the two thousand twelve role and responsibilities. This material was gathered primarily from training materials put forth by the National School Boards Association, which obviously the NHSBA is a state affiliate of that, state affiliate of that. And the hardest lessons, and I'm just gonna read this briefly. This was a, a survey presumably taken by the National School Boards Association. Experienced board members from across the nation were asked to identify the most difficult lesson or fact that they had to learn about board service. Here's what they said most often, the very first bullet point. Learning to acknowledge publicly that you have no power and authority as an individual board member, that only the board as a whole can make policies and decisions for the school district. I think that's, you know, an important piece of information in Oyster River for a couple reasons. One, it's a general, I mean, it, it, it's a general premise of law, that the board can only operate as a whole among the consensus of the board and the majority rule. Individual board members have no specific authority. As we talked about, the Department of Education rules at the back of this packet, you know, it says that duties and responsibilities of the school board, not of the school board member. You know, all throughout the statutes and the Department of Education rules, you know, anything that relates to the school district talks about the board. The board shall adopt a policy, the board shall provide transportation, or the district shall provide transportation services, the district shall provide, you know, a free and appropriate education, things of that nature. Except for the election statutes, there's no mention of what individual board members can do, simply because you don't have any authority as an individual. You know, and I think some of the recent, you know, litigation that was occurring in this community, you know, sort of bore that out. There, there were some comments in there from the judge in the opinion that talked about, you know, board members acting though, you know, the districts and the board's best interests without proper authority, without the board having fully authorized particular action. So, as discouraging as the result of some of that litigation may have been, you know, I think it's a good reminder for general aspect of this training to, when we focus on roles and responsibilities, to make sure that, you know, when the board is moving forward and operating, moving forward, that the board as a whole has to make decisions. Individual board members can be delegated certain responsibilities to look into this issue, or to look into that issue, or to conduct research on this. But again, that delegation and authority has to come from the board as a whole. So, it seems like a simple concept. You know, we preach it in all our, you know, all the trainings that the School Boards Association does. And, you know, that, 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 that limitation on an individual authorities, an individual board member's authority to act takes on a variety of roles and a variety of aspects. It's not just, you know, conducting a search for, you know, a new superintendent. It relates to, you know, you think it's a, you know, your neighbor tells you that the roof is leaking at the school, so you think you wanna go down to the building and, and maybe take a look at it. Well, that may be, you know, desirable, and you may think that as a board member, you need to know that information, and you probably do. But what are you gonna do when you get down there? You don't have any authority to tell the janitor to fix it. You don't have any authority to put the issue out to bid, to get a contractor in. You don't have any authority to, you know, order the custodian to, to clean up the mess. So, you know, and that ties back to policy. Let's say that you have something like that happen, you hear that from your neighbor that the roof is leaking. What do you, what's your response as an individual board member? Are you gonna get in the car and go down and take a look at it? Just generally, what do you think you would do if, if your neighbor comes up to you or runs into you at the supermarket and says, you know, I've got this complaint about a teacher, or I've got, you know, I've heard that the, you know, the roof is leaking. What do you, what do you think you might do?
I would take it to the superintendent, because that's, you're supposed to go and take down the roof.
Fantastic.
Since I really don't have, and that's one of our policies here, is from dealing with staff.
Yeah.
That it, you know, that is, since I'm setting a policy, it's not my role to actually fix the roof, but it is your role to make sure that the roof does get fixed, so to bring attention.
Been on the board a week, and you already got the right answers. I, I, I hope that was clear. Presumably, you have policy, Megan?
Well, I had some specific examples, and I wanted to get your opinion on.
Sure.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, or if you want me to... Well, one of the things is, you know, for example, doing, you know, our code of ethics gives, does stipulate that individual board members, we can do research on our own to gain information in general. Like, for example, we got an email from a parent in our district today about setting up foundations in, in general, and that's an area I have very little knowledge of, and she provided some links.
Yeah.
So, I might go ahead and do some reading on my own to educate myself about this. I would assume that is acceptable.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that, I mean, nothing, nothing stops you from doing your own research on...
Okay.
You know, things that you find important to you.
So, one of the areas I am concerned about, and this is, you know, I think Lee, I raised a concern to Lee about it, is the, the role of the chair and vice chair meeting with the superintendent to determine what goes on to our meeting agendas.
Okay.
Because my feeling is that you are making decisions... Because my feeling is that you are making decisions on behalf of the board, and, you know, it is happening, and it's, it's not a non-public situation, it's, it's, the, the content is very public and matter, I would assume, maybe, you know, not all the time. But why would that not, I mean, how should that be handled? Because I feel that there is discussion, there is deliberation, there's decision-making about what's important, and what is going to become the business of the board at the next meeting.
About what goes on the agenda.
Yeah, I think there is a lot of decision-making occurring in those sessions.
If I recall our sample, the School Boards Association sample policy, so don't quote me off, but I, I'm pretty familiar with this policy. It says that the agenda is established by the chair in consultation with the superintendent.
Right.
I think there's another line or another provision in our sample policy that says, you know, any board member may request that any issue or item be placed on the agenda with seven days' notice, whatever, you know, whatever it is in time to, to get it out to your members, so, you know.
But I can just clarify, our policy says it's the superintendent, in consultation with the board chair.
Yeah.
Shall prepare an agenda for each meeting.
Okay. Period? I mean, that's...
But it also says on there, it says during, board members during a meeting can make a request, but it's the chair and the superintendent's final decision, right?
Okay, I mean, I...
And can the what?
Vice, it doesn't say anything about the vice chair.
Yeah, so I think what Megan is addressing, does that, does that formulate a subcommittee?
Oh, okay. Does, does what formulate a subcommittee?
And where I was coming from with that was the fact that this is not deliberations...
Right.
On policy or decisions of the board, it's deciding what's to be brought forth.
I mean, I think that's, I think that's a general administrative function that needs to, that needs to occur in order to, to operate as a board. I don't think that a chair consulting with the superintendent about, you know, putting the agenda together is a...
But it's not just a consultation, it is a decision-making process.
It's deliberation.
You are decide, you know, I, I may email Lee, and we're going to say, "I want to talk about, you know, how can we bring foreign students to Oyster River, or how can we, you know, Krista wants to talk about full-day kindergarten, Anne wants to talk about..."
Don't use that as a...
You know, blah, blah, blah. You know, we all got these ideas, and there is, I mean, when, that is, that sets the, that sets the discussion for the district. I think that's a very powerful informational session, and I, I, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I'm just trying to really make sure that we're being transparent.
Sure.
And that, you know, if it weren't, I'd rather even be, you know, overly cautious and have it be public meetings, so that folks want to come, who want to hear, and so they know.
I mean, I've, I'm not aware of any boards that...
Yeah, well, I don't know any other board that went through what we went through. So I'd rather be err on the cautious side.
Certainly, certainly.
You know what I'm saying?
I've never heard, you know, heard it argued, or stated, or considered that the preparation of the agenda is, you know, a meeting, or a subcommittee, or, or, you know, as far as I know, the practice in most districts is, you know, pretty much in line with what that policy said, that the chair and the superintendent collaborate to put the agenda together, however, with the caveat that I mentioned, that any board member can request, you know, and that doesn't have to be a meeting, I mean, sending, sending a, an email to a superintendence saying, you know, "I request that the playground issue be included on the agenda." I mean, if this is a, you know, a significant enough concern among the rest of the board, and, you know, within Oyster River, then by all means, follow up with me, you know, tomorrow or in the coming days, and we can find a way to work through it, and ideally...
I just might add that we have a process at every meeting, a day at a meeting, for board members to suggest agenda items, and we have a planning calendar, and we put them on there.
Right.
So, it's very, it's very transparent in that regard, through there. And I think what we're trying to establish is whether or not the, if, if the, if our policy says that the superintendent establishes the agenda, is that classified as a board committee, or is that not? It's not a board committee.
I don't...
And can the superintendent, at that point, invite the chair to advise, and the vice chair to advise? That's the question.
It, it, the...
It's not deliberating or making decisions about the items that are on the agenda, it's deciding...
Right, right.
What would be, what's the timeframe, what's the appropriate...
Right. I, you know, I, I mean, I, I see both considerations, that, that, you know, the chair and the vice chair sitting down with the superintendent, you know, on a Friday before the meeting to put together the agenda, you know, is an administrative function designed for the, you know, smooth, effective operations of the district. However, in light of the recent litigation, which I was smart enough to bring copies with me, and highlight pertinent sections, the right-to-know law does not apply to isolated conversations among less than a quorum of individual members outside of public meetings, unless the conversations were planned or intended for the purpose of discussing matters relating to official business, and the public entity made decisions during the isolated conversation. I mean, I guess the question is whether or not an agenda, putting together an agenda is a decision that needs to be made by the board as a whole. It seems like you would never get out of your current, your current meeting.
There, I think the issue is that what you described, I think, applies to that situation. So, I think, look, you know, I mean, we could, as a board, decide to, to, you know, I don't know, make some decision and delegate it, and go off and do that, and I think that's okay.
Right.
But I guess I am still unclear, I am unclear.
Yeah.
Because I would say that work is definitely shaping the business of what occurs in this district, in a very direct manner.
Sure.
And why that would not be construed as a subcommittee, and I, I struggle with that.
Right, with, I'm not, I, I don't mean, sure. Maria?
Does it determine what happens, or when it happens? I would say when it happens, the chair and the superintendent might say the playground is better discussed after we have seen the budget for maintenance or something, I'm making that up. So we'll put that off for a month, even though somebody has brought it up as important. So it isn't deciding, "We're never going to have playgrounds."
My thought is, like, the big concern would be that somebody has something they want to put on the agenda, but it can never make it to...
Well, that's happened, I'm not going to lie, that's happened, you know, I've experienced that, others, you know, not necessarily when Mr. Levesque was here, but, you know, it's happened. I mean, so, you know, it shapes the conversation, that's all, and I think it's a very important... I, I'm not, you know, I don't want to belabor it, but...
I mean, it is a public, it does say that any board member can make a motion to change, you know, to add something to the agenda, so it's, and then it's voted on, so there's something that's out there, if you know, that's...
Right, and, I mean, the, the concern with, with that particular aspect is that, I mean, ideally, you need an agenda set, so everybody knows what's going to be talked about, absent, you know, some emergency or something that came up in the interim. I mean, I think, you know, I think that's what that provision ideally is for, you know, something came up after the agenda went out, and well, we, you know, this came up, we need to talk about it. I mean, that said, I would also, you know, I would also recommend some mechanism where any board member can get on at least the agenda, at least some meeting, it may not be the, you know, the next meeting, but may, you know, the meeting after that, then, an issue that they think is important to them. Question about whether or not that constitutes a subcommittee, I mean, I don't want to give any answer now that sounds like specific legal advice, without having, like, researched it, talked to colleagues, and whatnot, so, I mean, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to sound, you know, like I'm avoiding the question or anything, but I think it's just something that, that should be researched and, and looked into more before any definitive or specific answer is given.
I mean, I, I guess I want to just point out that past practice doesn't necessarily mean it's the right practice.
Certainly.
That's all.
Certainly.
You know, because we have a lot of past practices that...
Yep, yep.
Didn't work out.
Certainly.
I'd like to ask a question about getting information.
Okay, sure.
Just as a case that, there was a community commentary that was sent, and I think to all of us, that made some claims about one of the schools, and, with statistics. And I would like, you know, and my instinct is, just as, maybe, we're back to the academic training, is to kind of look, look at those statistics, are these true, you know, are there explanations for these? And my question is, how should I go about, in a situation like that, getting information? Because, I mean, my instinct might be to go directly to the school and get from the school, but should, or, but that could be, if everybody's going to the school, I could imagine a problem that way.
Right, right, exactly.
So, should the avenue be to ask the superintendent for that information? Did I just...
Yeah, as a sort of a general operational answer, one, you probably have a policy on this, whether or not the policy needs to be looked at or reviewed, you know, that's...
A policy of getting information?
A policy of board, board member requests for information, yet you probably have a policy that at least addresses that to some, to some degree. Whenever, you know, whenever, whenever any board member needs something within the school, a document, an answer, a phone call returned to a parent or constituent, the first call should always be the superintendent. "Leon, you know, I, my neighbor called me about this, can you either call them back, or can you look into it?" Or, you know, "Leon, we're putting the budget together, I got what you gave at the board, at the board meeting last night, however, is there any other information that you have, or, you know, can I have this document?" You know, when in doubt, when you're not sure where to go, or who to talk to, or what your procedure or protocol should be, call your superintendent. And that's always the best, you know, the best advice. And Leon, you know, I imagine you've been working in public schools for a number of years now, so the collective, you know, experience of, you know, your superintendent, and your assistant superintendents, and your principals, and whatnot, is going to be greater than what you, as an individual board member, have. So, I think if you, if you call your superintendent, he'll have an answer for you.
We have three policies on that topic. BHC is board communication with staff, BBAA is board member authority, and KI is visitors to the school, and they've all been revised within the last five years. I actually like policy, so...
I have to concur with Megan. This, this board's past practice, many years out, if there's any, any perception at all of something nefarious or not transparent, it's fair game for the legal system. And so, I, I, I'm very, I admire Megan's courage for bringing something up that was extremely painful for a few of us sitting here. Things we did not because we were intending to be nefarious, or, or violators of statutes, but because we thought we were doing business as, as we were instructed by our legal counsel and our administration.
Yep.
So, I, I have to concur with Megan, if there's anything that is public information, it should be done in public.
Any other questions, your policy, board roles, responsibilities, anything of that nature?
Well, I just want to come back again to this thing, there is a difference between a staff committee and a board committee in a function. I think this is where people are, are getting confused. I mean, the superintendent is not elected official, and can have his or her committees...
Right.
Advisory to the board and...
You need to call the math team.
And essentially, when I read the, the agenda, that's what, agenda setting, that's what that is. So superintendent sets the agenda, and he consults with the board chair. I mean, if you read it, for example, we have a wellness committee that will develop, they're doing work with staff.
Right.
They work for me.
Yeah.
So it's not as if, it's a subcommittee of the board.
Right.
But there are committees that are subcommittees of the board.
Certainly.
My question is about past practice in the district that I was in, in Maine, where the student rep was asked to vote. It was not counted, but it was recorded.
Okay.
So that the board had some idea as to the student's feel on things.
I think...
Lee was kind of hesitant about this idea.
We just did a policy on that.
Yeah. There's a statute, too.
Yeah, there is, there was a brand-new one from the...
Yeah, from a couple of years ago, they amended it. I think the statute specifically states a non-voting member, but, I mean, whether or not you want to ask, what, you know, hypothetically, would you support this motion, yea or nay? I mean, I don't know.
And can that be recorded in the minutes?
Yeah, I, I think it could be recorded if you wanted to, I mean, make sure that who's ever doing the tallying doesn't count the wrong hand.
Right.
You know? Sure, yeah, you know, student rep Smith, you know, voted nay in a non-voting, a non-
Obviously, giving the option of not voting.
Sure.
More than happy to vote.
Yeah.
Well, I'll bring it up with the board.
I, I think that about covers the sort of the roles and responsibilities aspect. If you want, we can move on to the right-to-know, the right-to-know discussion. I imagine that this is going to generate a lot of, a lot of discussion, a lot of questions. Hopefully, you know, I'll have the answers, aside from whether or not some things constitute committees. Hopefully, you should have another, a handout that I think Leon provided prior, called RSA 91A, the Right-to-Know Law Training Materials.
Sure, sure.
This is a long document that I updated in response to, to some, no changes in the law, but a couple of Supreme Court cases, and a couple, you know, cases from Superior Court. I don't know if this will be any, of any consolation, but rest assured, the Oyster River School Board is not the only public body that has come under scrutiny for things related to the right-to-know law. There have been town councils, there have been other school boards, that have all recently lost right-to-know litigation. So, you know, given some of the things that have happened here, you know, recently, my goal always is to, you know, give boards a good understanding of, of the right-to-know law, what it is, what it says, and then implement ideally some best practices and recommendations, you know, about, you know, what is permissible conduct under the right-to-know law, and what is not permissible conduct under the right-to-know law. So, the document, the user guide that I have, it's 18 pages long, I'm certainly not going to read through it, you know, word for word, line by line, or even page by page. I tried to hit, you know, on some of the, most of the key points, you know, the definitions, the purpose of a meeting on page two, communications outside of meetings. Page four is a document that I think at least some of you have seen. It was put together by the local government center a few years ago, and it's a flow chart. Is it a meeting? Use this flow chart to determine whether communications among members of a public body constitute a meeting subject to the right-to-know law. You know, I know the attorney that put this together, and she's a right-to-know law expert, so I have every reason to believe that this is, you know, a, and I read through it, and I think, I think it's a good document. Moving on to non-public sessions, you know, I, I tried to weave in some stuff, what I think will really help, if we look on page five, non-public sessions, and this portion is from page five to nine, this is also available on our website. I know that there were some questions about the manner in which boards, you know, the board enters a non-public session, and the, the specific procedure that the statute requires you to follow. What I put together on page, I believe it's eight and nine, is a checklist for compliance. You know, I recommend the boards make copies of that, and just keep it with them in their board packets, so when it's time to go into a non-public session, you know, you can just go right down the checklist to make sure that, you know, you're making the motions properly, they're being seconded properly, you're going into a non-public session for the stated reason, things of that nature. Krista, I know you had some right-to-know law questions, which I can address, you know, in a second. Was there anything specific that you wanted to talk about, Leon? Do you think there's anything specific that you really want me to cover about right-to-know law? I mean, I could talk about, I don't know where to begin with right-to-know law, to be honest with you. I mean, some of the newer board members, are you familiar with it? Do you know what it is? Do you know generally what it is, how to comply?
Well, for us, I mean, for the people that have been here and lived through it, but what, where do we go wrong? What are, what were our actual violations of the right-to-know? Just a name. You know, so, I'm a firm believer in learning from the past and not repeating our mistakes, so what, where exactly were, in, you know, a brief summary, our violations?
Okay. Okay. I've got the two decisions here. The first one dated January nineteenth. And, I mean, I certainly don't mean to relive or to rehash, you know.
No, I mean, I'm just.
Will you relive it and rehash it?
Yeah, I just don't want to.
I just want to make one comment, I want to make it crystal clear. Everything this board did was under legal guidance.
Right.
Everything. And we got expert advice from experts, superintendents, people, you know, our search committee, you know, I just think that is really important to be noted. Because it doesn't matter. If it's wrong, it's wrong. We are the school board, the buck stops with us.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, I want to know what we did wrong, because we don't do it again.
Well, you're going to find, sometimes you can't do, you can't control everything.
Right.
You bring up something in non-public that's not under this RSA, you're breaking the law. If Krista or somebody or Maria, somebody does that, that's breaking the law. So, good luck. It's hard.
That, let me, let me go through the opinion in a couple of bits, and I think we're going to, you know, maybe, maybe it's a good discussion, because I think it weaves in for, at least for some of the newer board members, a lot of, some of the aspects about individual board member authority and roles and responsibilities of the board. Going back to the first decision, which was issued on January nineteenth, Public Relations Subcommittee, this is the reading from the court. The plaintiff alleges that three board members convene on several occasions to meet with and hire a public relations firm. Plaintiff argues that these meetings constituted a subcommittee falling within the definition of a public body under the statute. Subcommittees of the board are essentially the board, they're arms of the board, they're agents of the board. So, if the board establishes a subcommittee or acts in a manner that takes on the form of a subcommittee, even absent full delegation and authority, chances are it's a subcommittee. So, if it's a subcommittee, the right to know law applies, meaning you have to post notice of the meeting, you have to take minutes, and you have to make it open to the public. This is all, this is all, I mean, take your notes, that's fine, it's all in the document, that's all in the packet. The board claimed, the board argued that these were informal work sessions, which involved less than a quorum of the school board, less than a majority, and were not the work of a subcommittee. Rather, they were work sessions undertaken to begin exploring the process for conducting an interim superintendent search. This is, and then, this is what the court said. The right to know law does not apply to isolated conversations among less than a quorum of individual members outside of public meetings. So, if you run into another board member at the supermarket, "How you doing? How are the kids? Play the great Red Sox game last night." It's not a meeting, it's not a subcommittee.
Well, what'd you say? Boy, wasn't Al a jerk at the last meeting?
The right to know law does not apply to isolated conversations among less than a quorum of individual members outside of a public meeting, unless, one, or unless the conversations were planned or intended for the purpose of discussing matters related to official board business. All right? And the public entity made decisions during the isolated conversation. The court goes a little further, though. Such meetings shall not be used to circumvent the spirit of the right to know law. Therefore, one, if official deliberations occur at gatherings of less than a quorum, or if decisions are made at such gatherings, or if the gatherings occur on a regular basis, a court may determine that they constitute improper meetings under the right to know law. So, those are the three categories, three criteria and three scenarios in which meetings of less than a quorum of a board may constitute or take on the form of a subcommittee. If official deliberations occur, decisions are made at such gatherings, and the gatherings occur on a regular basis.
So, if Al and Tom and I were to meet every Tuesday before a board meeting to discuss the agenda, is that a subcommittee?
Official deliberations, are you deliberating about the agenda perhaps? Decisions are made at such gatherings, well, given your scenario, not necessarily, you're just discussing it. Or the meetings gather on a regular basis, the court may constitute improper meetings under the right to know. I mean, that language, the court may constitute, you know, that gives the court the wiggle room. It's not saying every time it's going to be a committee.
Barrett, I think you know the circumstances.
I, yes.
And there is something else in that decision.
Yes.
Specifically stating that, you know, we were under a very, it was an impossible situation. We had strict confidentiality issues that we were being advised legally. And so, it does say the content of those meetings, of some of those meetings that I think are being referenced.
Right.
Were not necessarily covered by the right to know law. And I think it was such an extraordinary circumstance.
Yeah.
And I, you know, that's the problem.
Yeah, sure. Let's, let's do one thing, just for the benefit of the board and hopefully for, you know, the benefit of the community as well too. We have these two right to know law cases. Everybody in town knows about them, everybody knows what happened, you know, and, you know, we, we keep track of that in our office in Concord as well too. You know, the court said mistakes have been made. That's fine, it happens. But, you know, we work together now, we have the opinions, we have guidance from the court. You know, Megan, you said that you did get, you know, legal counsel from, from, you know, some of these meetings, though. You know, I know it's easier for me to say, because I don't live in, this isn't, I don't live here, and this isn't my community, but we can also work together collectively and as individuals to get, one, a better understanding of the right to know law, take guidance and recommendations from the court, and, and, and move forward with some processes that, you know, we've got a new superintendent coming into place, I presume that that has taken form, and we're all set with that. You know, we've got some turnover on the board, you know. We can have some of these things happen, and change is never easy, but we can also always, you know, I sound like a life coach or something, learn from our mistakes. You know, I know it was tough for everybody involved, and especially the board members that, that were on the board going through this, but, one, we can get through it. Two, there's still guidance and experts out there to help you weave through some of these lingering right to know law questions. And three, a better understanding of the law and more transparency and doing things openly doesn't hurt anybody. It doesn't hurt anybody.
I think it would be helpful, at least I would like to share where I see the violations occurring. And it's, it's very, like I said, it's very difficult. I mean, it's, it's, you go into non-public, we cite an RSA, you have to, you can't start talking about, you know, the playground situation, we're talking about the hiring of a principal, right? Or whatever. You have to stick to what you stipulated. And that means all of us are responsible for each other to make sure that's done. So, I think that's one of the biggest, I, my experience of seeing. I think the use of email is also an area where I've seen things, you know, sequential emails could happen, and that's, I could see how someone could, you know, as a new board member may not.
Inadvertently send an email to everybody.
Right, or divide emails, or whatever, you know. I think, I think the other issue is that the way meeting, meeting notices are posted, you know, making sure that they're posted in a timely fashion and that that's done correctly, and, and we delegate that role to the superintendent's office, making sure meeting minutes are posted correctly in a timely fashion. Again, that's, we delegate, that's our responsibility, but we delegate that. And then, I think, what was the other one I was thinking of? I mean, these are all the areas I think are very, you know, are easily, the more clerical perhaps in some ways, but.
Yeah.
You know, doing roll call votes when you're supposed to.
Sure.
You know, making sure when you have a special meeting, that you don't alter the agenda. That's a policy we have in our district. There's a lot.
Yeah.
And you almost need to have somebody who is like a right to know expert sitting there and just, because I, I think it's impossible, humanly impossible to be perfect.
Perfect is hard.
Yes.
Tom?
I just have one more, one question about this. According to the law, the decision, my understanding is we're enjoined.
Correct.
Could you explain to me what that means?
Sure. Basically, you're, the court basically is telling you that you are not allowed to violate the right to know law anymore, even though you're not, even though you're not allowed to violate it to begin with.
Not that they really mean it.
I told you before the election.
Right. What, what I, what I think happened, I mean, that was, that was the second opinion. I think that the court, I think the court found that there, in the first opinion, that there were a variety of right to know law violations. And some sanctions were issued. I'm not, I'm just looking through what the, what the, I believe Mr. Taylor got attorney's And that was about it. So, what the, but, you know, in, in, in the first round of litigation, you know, no decisions were undone by the court. The court didn't say, well, we're going to undo what the board did here, we're going to undo what the board did there. The second case, I think the court, this is just, just a guess, you know, just sort of my own, you know, having read these, what I think had happened. I think the court found that, one, there, again, there were multiple violations, two, they were recurring violations about things that maybe the board either knew or should have known were in violation of the right to know law. So, what I think is going to happen, would happen, by enjoining the board, basically preventing the board from committing further violations, is that the sanctions are going to get more serious if, if further, you know, if, if further violations are to be found, especially if the violations are repeated of things that were already, you know, the same matter, the same issue being violated again.
Would you share with the board who that would include?
Well, what do you mean by who would include?
That would include the entire board.
Well, yeah, but not individually. There's no individual liability against board members. The, the sanctions aren't imposed against the board as a whole. Nobody, nobody's going to jail, nobody's house is going to get foreclosed on, state police aren't going to come and whisk you off in the middle of the night. You know, none of those things are going to happen. I mean, you know, it, it's not ideal, I understand. Remedies, this is RSA ninety-one dash eight, colon, eight, remedies. Public, well, it says, I guess, there is individual liability. I don't, I've, I've yet to see individual liability being imposed against board members. That must be a somewhat newer provision.
Barrett?
Yep.
I was just going to point out something from our first case. We had a board member who was not timely in producing his right to know, documents for right to know request. And I think if you read the language in there, I think that was a major component in the board, you know, having to pay the legal fees.
Yeah.
For the plaintiff, right? So, you know, so, you know, one board member may be called out for, you know, was called out in our court case. I mean, that person wasn't necessarily, you know, charged individually or whatever, didn't have to pay for the fees, but it was pretty clear.
And we're all responsible. Right.
That, and another board member's treatment of, of an email definitely precipitated some things, so.
Yep.
Barrett, my understanding was that in the event that another case is filed, you don't know till it goes to the court whether that contempt is criminal or civil?
It's not criminal. It's not, it's not, it's not in the criminal code, for one, so it's not, not a criminal violation. Two, I mean, the remedies don't include, you know, as far as I can tell, penalties are only monetary, and court may invalidate any action of a public body taken in a meeting held in violation of the provisions of this chapter. In addition to any other relief rewarded pursuant to this chapter, the court may issue an order to enjoin future violations of this chapter. It's not a crime. It's not a crime. So, nobody's going to have a criminal record for.
But isn't the situation here is that the law is constantly evolving?
I mean.
I mean, if you look at it, there's a lot of gray area, and when, when something is challenged, it's further developed.
Certainly.
I mean, when one of the postings, for us, for example, if you read the law, it says that public records will be made available within so many, so many hours.
Right. Five business days.
It never says be posting, posted on the web, and yet, the court rules posted on the web.
Right.
And so, I read the statutes, it's made available, means someone requests and you give it to them.
Right. That's my take on it.
Now, that's all changed, so how can you?
I mean.
Prepare that one? And, and if you look at that.
Presumably, that could have appealed, but.
Go on many websites and take a look, and they're not there from other school systems or other municipalities.
Right, right.
So, so, in a way, it's, 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 it's evolving.
Yeah, and, I mean, the courts are, I mean, the courts are still catching up with the right to know law in the context of the electronic age. I mean, there haven't been that many, you know, email right to know law cases against public bodies or electronic meeting regarding public bodies, so.
I think there's two things I'd like to mention, you know, since we've been through this, I feel, you know, I think the three of us have a lot of thoughts about it, but the, your intent is irrelevant.
Yeah.
In the courtroom.
Yep.
It doesn't matter if you were doing everything you believe is right and giving professional advice from a legal team, doesn't matter. That's important to remember. And then, the other thing is, I think that the right to know law is important. It is definitely important. It gives, I think transparency of how we conduct business is so important, and I think that that was the reason the right to know law was put together, so that people on the outside will know how our business is being conducted and will have faith. And I think if we focus on that, and I think that's all we can do. It's not designed to be a dagger, it's designed to be a mechanism for transparency, and, you know, that's all I, you know, that's what I try to strive for. And you're, like I said, it's almost humanly impossible not to, you're not going to be perfect. It's impossible. But you have to strive for that.
Any other specific questions about either the current court cases or the law itself? And I'll continue on as soon as I find my materials here somewhere.
I'm looking at the checklist.
Yep.
And I don't know the policies here, but in my former life, we had bombs there at the high school, lots of police and state police and bomb sniffing dogs, and it was an expensive kind of event. They found out who did it, and it came before the board.
Yeah.
Is this covered here by?
Student matters.
Adversely, adversely affects the reputation of a person?
It is.
Okay.
That provision, ninety-one A three, paragraph C, the board may enter a non-public session to discuss matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board. That's the provision.
Including students.
Yes, it doesn't specifically state that, but that's the provision that.
Okay.
That allows boards to enter a non-public session to discuss student matters. Yep.
Is there a typo on number five?
It's possibly, where's the?
It should be letter E in the parentheses, I'm not sure.
On page five.
On page, the page here was looking at the checklist for compliance.
Oh, page eight.
It would be.
Number five.
Shouldn't negotiate pending legal claims?
Yep.
That should be E, right?
Yep, that should be E, thank you.
Okay.
I reworked this in preparation of our meeting, and thank you. Let's talk about email for a little bit, especially for the new board members. Let's move to page, where is it? Page fifteen of the right to know law document. Emails as public records, a couple considerations. Talk about this briefly, and then we'll go through more of what I have written down here. Basically, for the newer board members that aren't, either haven't, not familiar with the right to know law or haven't, you know, read the, the recent cases out of Oyster River, there are two basic considerations when we have email, when we have public bodies communicating via email. The first question is whether or not they're holding, you know, whether or not they're creating a public record. And the second question is whether or not they're holding improper meetings under the right to know law. The answer to both of those questions is yes. If, if, if the board is communicating via email, you're creating public records, and you're, depending on the nature and content of your, of your communications, you're possibly holding an illegal meeting. The basic elements of a public record are any document, whether it's paper or electronic, that comes into the possession of the board that discusses school district business or official board business, anything like that. Three basic elements. Three basic elements. So, if you have an email that's either created to or submitted by, you know, created by the board or submitted to the board as a whole, comes into the possession of a quorum of the board, and it discusses official board business, you have a public record. So, an email to a quorum of your board members discussing official board business is a public record. All right? I think, I think we're all, I think that seems pretty clear. Yeah?
About attorney?
Unless, unless it falls within one of the exemptions under RSA 91 dash eight colon five, in which case I would advise you shouldn't be talking about it via email anyway. But, um, yeah, I mean, you know, there could be, there could be circumstances in which an email, you know, is created or obtained on behalf of the board that discusses official board business, but is still exempt from disclosure under that statute. So, that said though, that's a segue into what I was just going to say. Because we know we've created public records, you know, leaving the whole meeting aspect aside in a minute, you know, what do they say? Don't put in writing something that, you know, you wouldn't want your mother to read, right? Well, when we're dealing with possibly confidential issues, special education students, confidential matters about, you know, staff discipline, it should not be discussed in email. It should not be discussed in email by board members. I think that's about as clear as we can get. The second aspect is whether or not email communications among a quorum of the board constitute improper meetings. In order for there to be a, a, a meeting under the right to know law, you need a gathering of a quorum of the board to act or discuss official board business. Real simple. What do we know about meetings, though? They need to be posted 24 hours. Minutes need to be taken of meetings. Well, if you're having sequential email communications among a quorum of the board, how can you possibly post notice of that? You can't. But if the board is engaging in discussions and deliberations via email, as we know from the recent litigation here and another case which I'll talk about in a minute, the board is holding an illegal meeting under the right to know law. You know, the Attorney General issued a memorandum, I believe in 2009, which is referenced in, in the two cases, you know, the two Oyster River right to know law cases, that basically gave that, gave that scenario. So, if the board is engaging in the deliberation and discussion, then it's holding an improper meeting. That doesn't mean that email can't be used by the board. You know, it, it, it's the way we communicate these days, it's just, yeah?
I have a quick question about that.
Sure.
If, the email that's in question in the case, as soon as I received the email, I, I knew that it was in, in violation of the right to know law.
Yeah.
So then, what are you supposed to do? I mean, I basically ignored it, like I never got it because I didn't know what to do with it.
Right.
Um, and I knew literally from reading the first five sentences in that email that it shouldn't have been sent, period.
Right, right.
But what are you supposed to do then? Like, what's your next step?
I think, I mean, I think you call your superintendent, and you have him get a letter from an attorney as soon as possible that's distributed to all the board members saying, this is my understanding of what happened, you know, I encourage board members not to communicate via email because these are the risks.
Shouldn't that also be declared the next public meeting that took place, or not?
There's, there's-
If it occurs?
Yes and no. There's no edict from the New Hampshire Supreme Court that states that. There was a case, it's included in the materials, Miller versus Fremont School Board from, I think it was 2000. That board was having communication via email. This was the first real electronic age right to know law case in the state. It wasn't appealed to the Supreme Court, so technically it's not the law of the land. That court, I think, I think they were being kind because it was kind of uncharted territory for, you know, boards, public bodies. That court, it, I mean, the same thing was going on here. There were emails going back and forth, and there was discussion and deliberation about, you know, goings on and things that properly, should have been properly discussed at a public meeting. The Rockingham County Superior Court stopped short of calling it an illegal meeting in that situation and just said that the emails that were created are public records and should therefore be, if the board does communicate via email in this manner, those emails should be attached to the minutes of the next public meeting. I mean, we know now that it's, you know, and, you know, I mean, I, you know, it's a meeting. I mean, it's, it, you know, these communications are a meeting. So, whether or not you have these, you, whether or not you have an email that's, say, sent by you to the board that does not contain the discussion or deliberations, but is what I call informational only, attaches the agenda for Tuesday's meeting, or, you know, the meeting has been changed from 6:30 to 7:00. Whether or not you're required, it's a public record, yes. Whether or not you're required to print that off and include that in the minutes of the next meeting. I don't think there's anything in the right to know law that requires it. But, you know, if you wanted to, if you wanted to do it, there's certainly nothing prohibiting you from doing that.
And then just one other thing to add. I mean, since that incident occurred, we have since made it mandatory that all school board members have an ORCSD email account.
Yep, absolutely.
And we did a lot of things in between, not July, June, July, May, June, July, whatever it was.
Yep.
A long time ago, don't ask me to remember dates, I don't do it. Timeframe, and even, before we even got to court the first time. We had instituted that, we had instituted several different policies. Because that was a six-month timeframe, we didn't just sit back and say, well, we're just gonna wait and see what the court does. I mean, we knew that some of the things we did could have been corrected, so we made some changes. And it's important for us as a new board to stick to those changes. So, the document that Wendy sent around with our confidential contact information contained our email addresses, our personal email addresses. I don't want any of you, not that I don't like you or want you to send me anything, I don't want any of you to use my personal email account because I'm not gonna sift, I don't wanna have to sift through it because I've had to do that before, it's not fun. And I personally don't want to have to have Comcast sending our personal email accounts, because that's what they're gonna do, to the district in order for our attorney to sift through, you know, my 800 personal emails plus the one that came from a school board member.
Right.
Um, so, stick with the ORCSD, it's a lot easier for people to get access to.
Yeah.
And then if you get an email that was sent to a quorum of the board, don't respond to it. At all. It's just informational purposes, you read it. Even if it sounds like something that you should respond to, don't do it.
And one doubt, wouldn't you just pass you, right?
I don't agree with that last part because I do think we sometimes get letters of public correspondence, and we have a right to respond to that, right? I mean, is that right?
We have a, we have a procedure that you will review tonight to show.
That, that gets back to, you know, sort of the, you know, you get an email from one of your constituents.
Right.
And it's not sent to, are, are you talking about if it's sent to a quorum or to you individually?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you got, if it's sent to the whole board-
It's the responsibility of the chair to respond, but I mean, we have, we'll review that a little later.
Is that an existing policy?
It's a procedure that was developed by the audit, by the Communications Committee. I have it in here, let me review it with you.
Yeah, I mean, it's not-
I just wanna add something that Krista said. On occasion, sometimes an email could be sent to the board-
Yep.
-as a quorum.
Right.
But not to the superintendent or to my assistant. So, if you don't see a CC to me or to Wendy, please do that because that's public record.
Right.
And I need to-
Please do what?
Sorry.
CC it to-
If you get an email addressed to the board and I'm not CC'd on it, the person did not send something to me or to my secretary, please refer a copy to Wendy.
It doesn't have to be the whole board.
Because we need to include it as public record.
Well, isn't that, there's one of these policies I read through also that if you get something on your personal email, you're supposed to forward it to your-
Correct.
So that would take care of that problem with sticking through.
Well, and if, like, Maria, Tom, you and I were to receive an email from someone, or say the Durham people, because that's easier. Were to receive an email from someone in Durham, and the three people that aren't in Durham didn't receive that email, you have to forward it to either Lee or Wendy so that it can be forwarded to the board because now it's been sent to a quorum, but not the entire board.
My question more was like, okay, suppose somebody in the public sends me a school board related business information to my personal account, I took it that I should forward that to my, my Oyster River-
Well, you're supposed to ask them.
And my superintendent.
Doesn't our policy say, if some, as I say, you know, a person said, emails you a question or a complaint or whatever, and you, I thought, and it's just sent to you, just very simple. Aren't you supposed to, I thought our policy stated that you were supposed to ask that person if that, they would like their correspondence shared with the quorum of the board, and then get their permission. And if they say yes, then we go ahead and forward it to the board and Lee and Wendy. That's, that's how it's been done, that's my understanding.
Unless it's been forwarded to a quorum of the board.
But I'm saying, the case of, the initial correspondence is, you know, your next door neighbor emails you out about the bus stop or whatever. And you're like, you have to say, well, do you wanna share this with the full board? Yes, no?
Right, what, I mean, that, that's sort of a twofold part question. One, about school board use of email, and two, about your roles and responsibilities in communicating with the public and what does your policy say about, about receiving questions and complaints and inquiries from members of the public? You know, in, in Megan's situation, you know, I think you, you know, if it's just a, like she said, your neighbor emails you and you alone, you know, you can either email back or, or pick up the phone and call that person and say, have you, you know, have you talked to the superintendent? I encourage you to, you know, yes, can I forward your email to the superintendent? If not, I encourage you to call the superintendent and have, you know, him or her, the building principal, whoever it is on your chain of command, you know, talk to them first. And then, you know, so there's sort of a two-part angle to that as well, too.
So, does that, let's say it's, it's sent just to one board member, an issue, is that a public record?
It, it, it's not clear. There is a case out of Conway a couple weeks ago, or I guess about, probably about two months ago now. This was a little bit different because the, the, the nature of the emails in question were about a board member. And individual members of the public had emailed the administration, had emailed the superintendent saying, this board member is, in his role of a private, I mean, it's public information, it's a public case, so I'll tell you exactly what happened. This board member was, had a kid in the school and was going to the football games and the basketball games and was being difficult. Yelling and screaming at the referees, yelling and screaming at opposing players, yelling and screaming at his own kid, yelling and screaming at the fans. So, yeah. So, so, parents, so, parents emailed the superintendent and said, you know, board member X is, you know, being difficult, I think, you know, you should, you know, talk about this with him or address this somehow. The, the newspaper, you know, got wind that, that these emails had been sent out. They went through litigation. The board tried to argue, not so much that, they didn't try and split the difference between acting as a private citizen and acting as a board member. They said, there are students involved in some of these letters, so we think that the information is private. The judge said, you know, this is purely public information, even though it didn't go to a quorum of the board, the nature and the subject of the emails dealt with a board member in his official capacity as a board member, and the administration had to talk to the chair about it, and so, you know, kind of depending on the nature of the email, it may or may, may not be a public record. I mean, I'm inclined to think that, you know, John Public emails Megan about the bus stop because it's your town or your district or whatever the makeup is. You know, I'm inclined to think that the email itself doesn't become a public record until maybe some action is taken on it. And that doesn't necessarily mean that the email itself has to be forwarded. I mean, if you call Lee on and they send out the transportation director to make a, to take a look at the stop or whatever, soon as some action is taken on the nature of that, it may become a public record, you know, absent it dealing with a student, you know, issue or private issue, something, something along those. I don't have a clear answer for that.
Is it because the incident is now reported to the superintendent?
Yeah, that's what I'm-
So, because it's public business? So, if I get a complaint regarding that, it's public record?
Possibly. It's possible. Again, I mean, again, depending on the nature of the complaint, you know, you may get an exemption under 91A5 that, you know, if it's a student matter, obviously, staff discipline matter, you know, it's hard to say. It's hard, I'm, I'm not aware of any cases where that has been litigated, where the email, the one, the one case I talked about at Conway, I'd have to double check the facts. I don't know if those emails went to a quorum of the board or if they just went to the superintendent. I don't know.
But isn't any email that goes to the superintendent automatically public record?
I mean, I, I, by its, by the basic definition, yeah, I mean, you think it is.
Unless it's about a student.
No, I mean, I, I, I-
For an employee.
I think that, I think that's probably, yeah, I, I, I think that's probably a fair assessment that any email received by the superintendent is a, is a public record.
Right. I mean, I think, my takeaway of all this is anything we, anything you do with a district employee or, you know, you have to consider it's public. You have to just have that mindset that if you send something to Lee or to Wendy or to anybody, you know, first of all, you shouldn't be sending anything, any other employee really, other than Lee or Wendy. But, I mean, you, you have to be prepared that it could be construed as public. That's how I look at it, just for myself.
So, I, just to follow up on this email thing, which we'll review the policy, but before we forget, the way it's set up now, if there is a request, we're able to do the search in my office and not have, will notify you that there is a right to know request. But my, my office is, is able now to retrieve the information and provide it to the person making the request as opposed to having to contact all the, send in your stuff, you know? That was the situation that was occurring in July. And so, we put a policy in place immediately, and I think it's pretty well, working pretty well now.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? I haven't, hope I made some of this clear for some of the newer board members. A couple other right to know questions that I just wanted to touch on briefly. We talked about this a little bit. What criteria make a non-quorum of the board a subcommittee and/or illegal meeting? I think, Krista, you asked something about this earlier, you know, the two or three of you getting together, you know, before the meeting to discuss the agenda. You know, I, I, I guess I kinda go back to the, the definition in, in your recent litigation. If official deliberations occur or if decisions are made at such meetings or if the gatherings occur on a regular basis, a court may determine that they constitute improper meetings. I mean, you know, given the climate in the community, given, you know, the outstanding, you know, right to know law cases, you know, it, it, it's highly possible that that could be construed, you know, a meeting, depending on, you know, their variety of factors. When it was occurring, how often it was occurring, the nature of the discussions, the nature of what was, you know, what was being discussed and talked about, so.
Which is too bad because, in all honesty, as a new board member-
It was beneficial for you to get the, to, yeah.
I needed to meet with a senior board member almost every week before our meeting to even understand what the heck we were talking about. Because I didn't understand the terminology, I didn't understand what I was looking at. I mean, I just got this board packet in the mail that was, you know, 40 pages, and I'm like, what?
Right.
What is this? Like, all these different colors and-
Yeah.
I, I didn't know what I was looking at. So, that's actually, um, it's really too bad because I think it'll make our meetings longer.
Yeah.
I think it will make board members less prepared coming into a meeting.
Yeah.
I wasn't doing it to-
To be nefarious.
-deliberate or anything. I was just doing it to gain information for myself so I could be a more productive board member.
I guess in a case like that, what I would advise is for an individual board member to give me a call. And I'll explain, try to explain the agenda and the packet, whatever information.
That's what I was thinking. Call your super, one doubt, call the superintendent.
I mean, you call Lee, obviously, but you could also call people maybe who've been on the board before, I guess, if you wanted to. It was like a basic, basic question.
Yeah, but that's what I was doing, and that would be construed as a-
But it's, no, not someone who's on the board, like, retired.
Oh, someone who wasn't, oh, got it.
Right.
Like, if you had, like, say we had something on a strategic plan, maybe you wanna call Jocelyn and say, well, what did you guys do?
Right.
I mean, I don't, she's just a regular citizen now, she's not on the school board anymore.
Nothing wrong with that. Could always call me too. Could always call me too if there's terminology, phraseology.
I have very not speedo.
Another question. Can an individual board member speak to the press? This isn't so much right to know, but again, kind of bring back to the sort of roles and responsibilities. The answer to this is twofold. As an initial, as an initial matter, yes, a board member can speak to the press. What's important to remember is the capacity in which the board member is speaking, either as a private citizen or as a board member. Board members do not lose their First Amendment rights to speak just by virtue of them being elected officials. What is important, that if speaking with the press, the board member made clear what role he or she is speaking in. As far as speaking with the press as a liaison or official sport- As far as speaking with the press as a liaison or official spokesperson for the board, this can be handled in one of two ways. First, the board may have a policy that designates a specific board member as the board spokesperson. For example, an HSBA sample policy, BBAB, designates that the board, designates the board chair as the public spokesperson for the board at all times except if this responsibility is specifically delegated to others, which leads to the second aspect. The board may designate a spokesperson at any time by vote of the board and by official board function. So, you know, let's, if you have a, a, you know, a facilities committee and, you know, you've got a bond issue coming up for a new roof or whatever, you know, the chairperson of that, of that facilities committee may be the one who either writes a press release or, you know, returns the phone call to the reporter because they've got more intimate details about, you know, what went into the bidding and all that sort of stuff.
But doesn't that person have to get permission by the quorum of the board, not just the subcommittee? You have to get permission from the whole board to do that.
Correct, by the board, by the, by the, the whole board, yes.
You know, all, like, for example, all the, any work we've done, you know, you know, we have to get, if we wanted to, like, say, okay, we welcome, you know, Dr. Morse or News or Pretend, we have to vote as a board that we want to create that document and then either delegate it to somebody or, you know, that has to be done in the boardroom.
And a last question. The best practice for hiring the school board attorney. If the need for an attorney arises, the board should discuss the matter and then take a vote to designate a specific board member or the superintendent as liaison with the attorney, authorized to make phone calls to the attorney, authorized to talk to the attorney, authorized to solicit legal services. However, the decision to hire a specific attorney should be made by the board as a whole upon recommendation of the designated liaison. I think, is that, is that clear?
We have.
It's now somebody on retainers.
We have someone on retainer, both for labor and, and practices like that.
Okay, okay.
I just have one more quick question.
Sure.
Our attorney has, from what I can remember, he hasn't changed this, to your point at all. After our legal decision came out, he basically told us not to meet with any other board member indefinitely because it was so unclear to him in his research.
About the subcommittee issue, yeah.
That, you know, we shouldn't do anything together ever.
Right.
You know, I think that's probably a little.
That, I mean.
To one side, but.
Right, to a degree, I think that seems, I mean, he, you know, being overly cautious, obviously, which is, you know, never bad advice.
Especially not in our situation.
But do you see why, the question I raised earlier?
Certainly.
With this, we're getting that legal advice. I'm seeing a situation that's going to happen, that there's two board members meeting. I know it's a sub, it's a group of, for Leon's work, but.
What, what, this is just my hypothesis, all right? This isn't legal analysis or this is just after reading through, you know, the couple decisions, this is my best guess of why the court ruled some of the way that it did. It got the sense that these subcommittees were making decisions for the whole of the board without ever being duly authorized or delegated to do so by the board. So that by the time this subcommittee came to a board meeting, decisions were already made, votes were already tallied, and rather than these things being vetted through the board as a whole, the work of this subcommittee, which was never fully authorized by the board, was just sort of being implemented and going through. That's my guess based on what I've known from some of the facts from, you know, talking to you guys over the last year and, and my reading of the decision. That may or may not be accurate, in which case, you know, the court, the court needed to, you know, needed to sanction the board and find a violation of, you know, of the board for operating in that manner, for individual board members going forward and, and making decisions without full authorization of the board. Again, that's just my best guess. I mean, we don't need to get into the, the nitty gritty of to, you know, what happened and when it happened and how it happened. But, I mean, the concerns are noted, though, about, you know, putting the agenda together or, you know, can I pick up the phone and call, you know, my chair about questions because I don't know what happened or, you know, need background or stuff like that? You know, it, it, you know, it places you in a tough spot right now. But, you know, we'll, we'll find a way to, to manage and to work in a manner that is one, legally compliant and two, serves the best interests of the board and the community to get your work done. So, you know, there's, there's ways to, to, you know, once things sort of settle down a little bit, there are ways to, to still operate efficiently and effectively within the confines of the law. And like I said, we're always here to help. Any other questions, concerns, comments? I hope it was beneficial for the, for the new board members. I know Megan, Ann and Krista, you've come and seen me do the same spiel three or four times now, so.
But it didn't help us, so.
The School Board Association for the new board members, too, we conduct a new board member orientation every year. There's one in Concord, I don't have the dates in front of me.
May ninth.
The ninth, May ninth. If you can make it out, I encourage you to, to attend.
Is that a special day of the week?
I think it's a Wednesday.
It's in the evening, five to, is there any packet, the banding a packet?
Yeah.
I believe it's from five to eight thirty in the evening.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's not going to be as in-depth as what we talked about tonight because we talked over, we do three or four or five different sort of half-hour presentations, but you'll learn a lot more about the services that the School Board Association provides. We usually get, we've been getting the one in Concord, seventy, seventy-five, eighty people a year now. So you'll be able to, you know, talk to other board members, hear what's on their mind, hear their concerns. It, it, it's a really good program if you can make it.
If I could just interject and say, last year, six out of the seven of us went and the year before, I went by myself. And I think that it's very helpful for all of us to go as many of us as we can because it provides good information for us to continue our discussions in our board meetings moving forward as to best practices and, and things that may be occurring in other districts that we don't have in our district that may be, you know, good or bad or indifferent, I'm not sure. But I've attended every single New Hampshire School Board Association meeting since I've been on the board, and I find them all to be very helpful. So I highly encourage all of you on planning on going.
I just want, I just want to point out that Krista has been really, done a really phenomenal job helping us leverage our resources and just want to thank her for that. And I would also say that, you know, when I went to this last year, I met, I met some people from different school districts and I've maintained a relationship with them. And it's been, it's actually been really helpful. We had some candidates when we were interviewing interim superintendent who I could use as a reference, this person worked in that person's district. You know, so that was helpful. It was helpful, you know, to even talk about, how do you, what's your policy to handle XYZ? And that's sort of some of that research I'm talking about you do above and beyond that, you know, I wanted to make sure was still okay to do because I think it helps you be a better board member.
Certainly. Well, thank you for the, for the kind words, Krista. I'm glad that, you know, you find the program beneficial and, you know, again, as an association and as an organization, you know, we're the only, we're the only entity in the state that is here looking out for the best interest of school boards. You know, we are your resource for what you need in terms of operations, in terms of policy, in terms of legislative advocacy, in terms of, you know, the first line of legal information, in terms of quick right to know law answers because you have a meeting that night, you're not sure what's going on. So, you know, not only do we, you know, thank you for your continued membership in our association, you know, we always encourage our members to, to utilize our services to the fullest extent possible. So with that, if there are no more questions tonight?
Just one.
Sure.
There's six people piled into one car.
Seven cars, seven cars.
Maybe carpool people from like Dover and just mix it up or something.
You know, I mean, you know, if, if you carpool, just, you know, don't, don't talk about things, you know? Don't, don't talk about official board business.
Last year, we purposely split up the carpools, three in one car and three in the other car. And then we got there and my son got a fever of a hundred and four and I drove. So, you know, six board members went back, but they, they were like, it was almost a big joke because you couldn't talk about anything, so they didn't.
Well, thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me. If there are any other follow-up questions, you know, you think about tonight when you get home or tomorrow morning after you slept on it, you know, call Leon and have him get in touch with me and more than happy to answer whatever questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Question for the chair. Would you like to recess for about five minutes? I have about an hour left, I'm going to pick up the pace. Would you like to recess for about five minutes?
I would like to.
Could you declare a recess and we want to reconvene at what time?
Be in recess and be back at twenty-five, twenty-seven. Let's come back to order, please.
Okay. Just to get back to what he was commenting, if you want to attend the training session, please fill out that registration sheet and give it to me.
And give us a fifty dollar check.
And we'll, we'll send it for you, get you registered, okay? So if I, if I actually, if I know just tonight, you give me, why don't you just put your name on it, I give it to me, what that is, and then I can send in the registrations this week.
You just do it online. You can register online.
And, and is the payment online too?
They don't actually charge you the payment until you attend the seminar. They'll send an invoice back after the New Hampshire School Association seminar with everybody who came and then they build the district.
Either way, you can go online, build a district, or you can give it to me, we'll send it in, whatever way you want to do it. Okay? All right. The first, we're going to try to deal with this in about an hour. The first piece I wanted to just go over is the Code of Ethics. The new board members, I don't know if you had a chance to sign, to review the Code of Ethics and give me the signed copy so I can put it on file along with a copy of your oath of office certificate, okay? I've got one here.
Did I give you, did I let sign?
I didn't get yours yet. This is the first one I've.
You don't have one in this.
Yes, or you do? I, I sent you a packet, it's right where the Code of Ethics is, open up. Okay, got it. Okay, it's right there. Just a couple of things I want to mention on this policy. There, there was some new language that was added last year, and I want to just review it to, to you. Essentially says that you will engage in respectful public discourse and refrain from discouraging individuals on the basis of gender, sexual orientation and other personal differences and affiliations. There was language added the school year. And, and then the last part is, remember always that my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of students attending the public schools. Krista, every year, the board develops its goals and prior to the elections, the board did go over its goals for the year and tried to give an update. And I just asked Krista to update the board right now as to where we are with last year's goals.
So, this is a template we've been using now for three, two years. This will be our third year if we use this template. On board goals and it, it's different from previous goals because we've just had the goal. And this has allowed us to have sort of a matrix to decide whether or not we're achieving those goals, who's going to achieve them and when we're going to achieve them by. So these are the board goals that we came up with last year. I'm actually missing a page, but.
We're missing a page here, I'm just.
Yeah, sorry. You should all have it on your desktop under the school board.
They don't have that.
They don't have it? Well, I'll email it to you then, how about that?
That would be good.
I can do it right now. And then the stuff in black is our original board goal. The stuff in red is, we discussed it two meetings before the election, just to do, go back, every year we go back and we review whether or not we've accomplished the goals that we set out to accomplish. And actually, this year, we didn't do too badly. There are some years where something occurs and it literally takes over your entire thing and then you don't get any of your goals accomplished. But this year, we actually did pretty well. And so if you just look over it, if you have any questions, you can ask, I guess, Megan, Ann or I, as to what it means or what it is, but they're, I think they're pretty self-explanatory.
So let me ask a question to Lee. Are we going to talk about board goals as an agenda item?
I believe it's either in June or somewhere around that time, May or June, when the board engages in goal setting.
Okay.
So are you sending the document now?
Yeah.
You're all, you're all done now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, fine. So this is a document. What's that?
Did you want me to do more than that?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, did you want me to do?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, oh, okay. You want me to read through it or?
No, 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 that's fine.
We're going to do it in June.
I, I just think that you just mail it to them and just understand that this will come back, you'll be revisiting this again. I just want to make you aware that there is a process for goal setting and that you need to be involved in that. And obviously, one of the big issues you're going to have to deal with this year is going to be how you want to deal with strategic planning, strategic thinking, which is there because the board did adopt the philosophy, statement and its vision for the public, for public schools. And there are, these strategies have yet to be developed. Moving on, in your packet, the same section, under organization, I have included for your benefit, kind of an organizational chart that gives you kind of a line picture of how the school district will be organized next year with the school board, the superintendent, and the various directors that you have. You have a business director, a director of instruction, that would be Danielle's position yet to be filled. There's another director of instruction and, and special ed, which is Phyllis Schlichter. And you have your four principals and then you have special ed coordinators and shows how the IT director. So it gives you kind of a, an idea of the positions and how they're aligned in the district. On the next page are your scheduled board meetings. And just be aware that you'll be, I think, believe in May or some, on that time, you'll be adopting the schedule for the following year. And your board meetings are usually on the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday of the month. And in the months of July and August, you have one meeting, the third Wednesday of the month. The next sheet was my attempt to try to put together some of the recurring items that come out every year. And I haven't, it's, I just started it, so I'm, I'm new, I don't have it all here, but you could just kind of glance at a, at a, at a month and you see some of the things that the boards have done historically and try to capture these events that you'll normally see on your planning calendar. So you'll see June, the school board goals and district initiatives and things of that nature that normally come part, take part.
I'd hate to, we, this appoint treasurer school physician, we did that in March.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Is that going to change in the future?
No.
Okay.
Some of these months might be off a little bit because they probably always haven't occurred at the same time. But it's, I'm just trying to refine this and try to get this as a, as a, as a planning.
Right, okay, thank you.
And some of the basics for this, is that available on the website, like evaluation of the superintendent? Do we have the format for that?
I'm sorry, I can't say that? The, the evaluation of superintendent?
Um, usually, that's the next example.
There is a, a policy that the board follows of the evaluation superintendent. Usually it occurs in the month of December.
Yeah, but there is a format.
Yes, there's a form and everything for that.
Maria, I think it's an important policy for the chair to review because there are some specific date deadlines that are stipulated. some specific date deadlines that are stipulated and that, and that's one of those that, you know, just make sure, either meet it or change it, I guess.
And I provided for you, if you look at the second school calendar page, I provided you next year's school calendar. And just want to make you aware that a school calendar is planned on 180 student days. There are five workshop days for teachers included in there, and there are five planned snow days. And so, if we get, we use less snow days, then students will end the school year earlier. There is under, and we have six early release days in this calendar that actually count as school days. Now, school law requires so many hours of instructional time at the elementary and so many hours at the secondary and the middle school. And we comply with that with the calendar that we have. My administrative team and some staff members, some of the schools are interested in looking at this calendar changing for the following year. The under conversation is this idea whether or not it would be educationally more sound to use more workshop days and less early release days because they finding that just an afternoon to do professional development with staff really doesn't give them the time. So, and it would comply within all the time for, the hours, it still complies, they ran numbers and ran, were well within the instructional times. But there are implications for that with nutrition, every other thing. So, we're going to be looking at that towards the end of the year, and that will be a conversation for you to handle next year because I know that folks are going to come and present that idea to you. On the committee structures, be aware that you'll also be, the spring, appointing not only members to some of the standing committees there are, but some of the board members will also be appointed. I guess the chair will ask who's interested and appoint members to some of the committees. We have, there's an operations committee, communications committee, there's a negotiations committee, there's a strategic planning committee that would probably need to be reactivated, there's a sustainability committee, and you've got the advisory budget committee. And all of these have representation, school board representation on them and will have explanations of what these committees do and appointments to be made. There are also other organizations that the school board members serve as representations and not really committees. Those include the New Hampshire School Board's Delegate Assembly. Krista's been a person usually attending that. There's been a regional, there's a regional vocational advisory, there's a Strafford Learning, to name a few. So, there are other boards, organizations to which this school board has representation. And so, there will be these appointments taking place later this spring.
And as a representative of Lee, do I have obligations to the town?
No.
Can I just ask a quick question? Which contracts are for negotiation this year?
Next year, we have the custodial.
Custodial.
Which one?
That's it, just one. I want to be on that.
I have included information in your packet about the advisory budget committee. We have, I think each year, there is, the board establishes its budget goals and thus communicates to the budget advisory committee. And the advisory budget committee has defined its purpose along with the board, and that's to form an advisory committee that becomes educated about the ORCSD budget and provides budget recommendations to the school board. These recommendations, we will put the needs of the students first and will also be fiscally responsive to taxpayers. So, at issue will be when you look at this, defining what role you want the ABC to play this year as you look at your budget timeline. If you continue on to the next page, we did receive communication from Anne Knight, who is the chair of the committee. And what I've asked most of these committees to do at this point is to try to present who's, to you, a list of who's on them and also how these terms of service work. And so, they're looking at staggered terms. And so, there will have to be some staggered terms appointed for the ABC. And if you continue on, you will see the list of the folks who presently serve, and it's up to nine, nine members on the committee.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Maybe this isn't appropriate time, but does, do we give a charge to this committee?
Yes.
Or does this committee determine its role?
You, you have right up here on the, where it says advisory budget committee composition and charge. See that, the purpose, that's its charge.
Okay, but nothing more specific than this charge?
That's it. And other than that, the board will undoubtedly meet with the members and talk about what you want them to do. Okay, the approach. And you may want them to do less, you may want them to do more. I mean, I'm willing to give you some advice on my observations regarding the budget process and the role of the board. I'd be happy to do that, but I'm sure that they're going to be waiting to see what role you want them to do. And I think probably in, early on, you probably, you will need to make some decisions and let the leadership team know where you are relative to the budget. Some of this work can be accomplished in the summer. I know I came last year in July and it was, it was a tough ride to try to, my administrators and teachers people come back in September to starting a school and my budget's presented to the school board October 4th. It was, it was tough. Okay? And to try to get the feedback and, and comments from, from staff and everyone else. So, it would be, would have been, it'd be well to have that laid out prior because some of these things could be done early.
Just a question of clarification. Really, we have, besides the, the school board committees, these represented to other groups, there are, there's the strategic planning committee, sustainability committee. Well, I think the wellness is considered a committee, right?
It's my.
Yeah, your committee. Oh, that's your committee, okay. And advisory budget committee. The sustainability committee, we absolutely, you know, that's, that is a Warren article. We absolutely have that committee.
Yes.
And, but the other two are at the discretion of the school board, correct?
Yes.
So that means the strategic planning committee and the advisory budget committee, that's, you know, does that, is that, are those mandatory committees in policy?
They're not mandatory. They're, they're appointed by the board, designated by the board, charged by the board.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying, I just wanted to be clear on the difference there, that people understood that.
And how are the members? How do we select members?
The members, traditionally, I can be corrected here, but my understanding is that the board chair has made recommendations to the board and have been appointed. So, there's a policy that we have that says that the board chair can make appointments to the committees. And usually, it's been, public announcements made, there's an opening, and, and letters have come in, and the board chair's reviewed and made recommendations in the committee.
Just one little correction. It shows that I didn't serve on any committees. I did serve on the communications committee and the policy committee, even though we don't have a policy committee, but I did serve on the communications committee.
Okay. Okay, we'll do the next.
I just, you know, whatever. I was a total slacker.
Thank you.
Get some credit for something.
Moving along, I provided for you the information on the sustainability committee, which was a committee that was, I believe, authorized through a Warren article and was approved again this year. And this is the work that they have put together, their vision. You also see the complete membership that they have on their committee. And I asked them to also look at how their terms, so we have these people on the committee, but nothing has been designated as staggered terms or anything of that nature appointment. So I've asked them to take a look at that and come back with recommendations on how this should work because I know there are going to be openings occurring and there needs to be a process for renewal. And then the last committee that I just want to make you aware of is the long-range planning committee. And I've been advised that this committee's been in existence something like 30 years.
That's long range.
So, what we have, what you have before you are the folks who presently serve on the long-range planning committee. And again, I, it's like they're appointed for life, but I've asked the chair to review that and suggest how, if any openings occur, what the process will be for this. But that states that they are appointed by the board, but they look for specific skill set for people and they've remained on and on. So, I also, for your review, and I think it probably would be a good idea to have that committee report to this board this spring again. They did complete a projection on enrollment in December of 2011 presented to the board. Be aware that this is one of the issues that this board is going to need to address with its strategic planning. If you look at their projections, they, over the next 10 years, the projections show a decrease in our population of about 20%, okay? Which means that Massway would move from the present, this year's enrollment of 324 to 224 by the year 2021 and 2022. Mohera from 388 to 240, the middle school from 612 to 494, and the high school from 680 to 642 and, 641. And that's including, including the 60 students that we have there for tuition, so it calculates that in. So when you look at these numbers, and I know we talk a lot about the high school, but the biggest attrition's going to be occurring at the elementary level. So it's going to really take some thinking and I think for this community to come together and really look at what are the possibilities, opportunities, as well as the threats. I've also asked the committee, the chair, Lisa Allison, to, if she could, provide some demographic descriptors that explain why we are experiencing such an enrollment decline. There are some factors within our communities, not only an aging population, but control of growth and things of that nature, and possibly less migration. And so, to anticipate that it's going to be that significant shift in the 10 years without this growth taking place is not high. So, chances are, in other words, that the projections are quite accurate. Yes?
Just for the board's edification, if you look at one of Lisa's charts, which is on page 14, it shows that our enrollment has been declining since 2000. So what you're expecting to happen in the next 10 years is being mirrored with what has already happened statewide.
Actually, to be accurate, it's an acceleration. I mean, it was, it went down 10% over the past 10 years, but it's going to accelerate and go down 20%. So, the curve is, it's steepening second derivative.
So there are some major decisions regarding grade configurations, what you do. There's some major decisions regarding if you are interested in tuition students at the high school level. And I know that there are neighboring school systems who are, with whom we are still in conversations, nothing definite. But it would seem that if there is room for that type of arrangement, particularly at the high school, I mean, that's one option. You know, so the option is that either you, you remain small and contract, or you do a combination or a hybrid. You could do some different grade configurations and also look at tuition students or not. And that has building implications. So even though we have, you'll be receiving a report on facilities planning, all of that obviously is contingent upon your strategic plan as to where you're headed. And I would think that enrollment patterns play a major role along with quality of education, what you want for your students. So, the next section is dealing with our meetings. And it does say here that the superintendent, in consultation with the board chair, will present agenda meetings. And our local policy calls for meetings posted 72 hours in advance, although state law, the regulations of right to know are 24. All additions, deletions, or changes agenda must be approved by the majority of the vote of the board members presented in voting. So, in other words, if the, even though you have an agenda, things can be added when they're presented to you. We prefer not to do that, but sometimes some things come out and can be done. And as we mentioned at the end of the agenda, if you look at the next page, this should really be like a BEDR, I guess, I don't know. It's not really a policy. It's just really like, like a reg that the board uses. And it shows the present format. And so, probably at one of our upcoming meetings, we may want to put this on the agenda and discuss if you are satisfied with this format, if there are other things you want to add or, or change.
If I could just quickly add, we changed this format September of 2010, I think. Is that what it says on here? Yay, September 22nd of 2010. All I had to do was look. And we did it initially to solve some issues that we were having. Mainly, people were, people from the public were complaining that they didn't want to sit through all of the minutia of our meeting, let's, for lack of better description. So we put the public comments in the middle, but we fully intended to review this format within six to 12 months after that to change it again if it wasn't working. And because of things that were more important, that never occurred. So, I welcome you to review it.
Thank you. The next piece of board.
Is that going to be on the agenda to review that?
I will be reviewing this as the board chair at what appropriate time to bring this up for conversation. Okay? The next section, we've already reviewed. It's all about the right to know and the checklist we use when we go into non-public. And then, the last part that is in this plastic paper, Maria and I met and just talked about how we, one of our policy, one of our policies deals with the Robbins Rule of Order. And my experience over the years is that we need to have basic rules of organization, how we agree to conduct our business. And so, this is just a little reference sheet, and I'll just refer to this, and it might help us in the future to help guide our work if we take a look at this. Now, we tried to simplify it, a main motion and a sub-motion. And I know you can go to Robbins Rule of Order and you find all types of other terminology in there, but a main motion, the idea of a meeting, a formal meeting, is that everything goes to the chair. Before you speak, you need to recognize by the chair, okay? And you make a motion, it is seconded, it's debatable, and it's a majority vote, okay? Now, all these sub-motions, you have a motion to amend. Again, it is seconded, it's debatable, it's a majority vote. Now, one of the issues sometimes that comes up is that you debate something to no end. And someone says, move the question, right? Well, when you move the previous question, you need a second. It is not debatable, but you should have two-thirds of the majority vote to kill it, I mean, to say, we're done, okay? And then you vote on a motion.
Not to pass.
Okay? And then, there's a time, sometimes in a, in a meeting, you don't want to deal with the issue right now because you feel there's something else that needs to be dealt with before you can deal with that one. So you make a motion to table. And usually, I guess Maria and I agree that the way we want to operate, I mean, she wants to operate, I guess it's to table, it's the same meeting. You're not going to table for 10 meetings later. You table for the same meeting. So there is a second, it's not debatable, and it's a majority vote, if you want a table. And then, there's a time, you can probably specify where on the agenda where you want to put it to. Or someone can call later after you've dealt with an issue you think you need to deal with first before you can handle that one, you can say, remove from the table. And there's a second, it's not debatable, again, it's a majority. And then, if you want to delay an action or something, postpone to another meeting because you need more time, you can postpone to a specific date. I'd like to postpone this motion to the next meeting. And then, there's a second, it's debatable, it's a majority vote. And there are times too when what is really wanted is that a board member wants to, don't want to take action on a motion, they want to refer it. So it's appropriate to make a motion to refer to the superintendent, refer to this committee, and, and report back, okay? So you can make that a second, it's debatable, it's a majority. Yes?
I have a question about the previous, the postponed to another meeting. So say, there's this discussion, it's decided that postpone, it will automatically appear on the agenda of the next regular meeting?
No, that's part of the motion.
You say one.
I just want to be clear, okay?
Two.
You have to include in that motion, I'd like to postpone this to our next regular meeting or whatever.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's helpful that way. So, and then, you, then this one, this came up this year, a motion to reconsider. And Maria and I agreed that that should be. And Maria and I agree that that should be that same meeting.
No, we didn't agree on that.
We didn't agree on that. Sorry. I stand corrected, okay. She's the Chair, here's the other thing, the Chair rules on all of this, not the superintendent. So it's her prerogative. But reconsider, I thought it was usually the same meeting, although it can be, but I just try to keep it simple. It's a second, it's debatable, and a majority. And whoever makes the vote to reconsider must be on the prevailing side, okay? So if the Chair wants to, wants to permit a reconsider of a vote, a meeting later, I guess it's her prerogative to do that. My, I guess, approach is many times is to, if you disagree with an action that's been taken, you rescind it. So there's another way of doing it. You can rescind a motion or an action, it's, you need a second, it's debatable. And if it is given with prior notice, for example, it's on your agenda and you know that's going to come, it only takes a majority. If you want to rescind something and it has not been on the agenda, it's not prior notice, it takes two-thirds a vote, okay? And then the request to withdraw, this came out the other day.
Yeah.
It's not really a motion to request, and it needs, if it's been on the table, like the Chair has said, we have a motion to do this, it's under discussion, it's on the table, it needs the unanimous consent of the members, because it belongs to the Board at that point. And then something I haven't seen used often, but sometimes it's very useful when you get caught up in language for amendment, you know, and I've seen that happen here, you know, when you're debating about, I think this word, that word. Well, you know, sometimes you can come up with a whole new little, a couple sentences, and you can substitute a motion.
That's nice.
Okay, so you can rewrite it over. So you make a motion, I move the substitute, such and such for, make a substitute motion. So what you really, and it's treated like an amendment. So you vote on the substitute motion, then you go back and vote on a motion, okay? And then obviously adjourn, and I guess Maria and I kind of agree that probably our meetings should be targeted for 10:30 or later. And by Roberts Rules of Order, you can make a motion to adjourn any time. And it's not debatable.
Yes.
And a majority rules, okay? I don't know if that's bad news or good news here, but. Now, there are a couple of other things that come up during the course of a meeting, and there are procedures. And the Chair rules on these requests. And one of them is, well, you know, sometimes we have the tendency to get off track. We're supposed to be a motion, and we're off, I mean, we all forget, we're all gone cloud nine somewhere, discussing something, and then it takes someone to say, okay, order of the day, or come back to the order. And so the Chair can go back and say, oh yeah, this is what we need to be back on. Okay, so there is a procedure, a polite procedure, to bring everybody back on focus. Yes?
Can I ask about that? So what if, you know, for example, you know, Maria gets caught up in the clouds, or someone else, can you, can another Board member make a point of order?
Any Board member can bring that up.
Okay.
To the Chair.
Okay, I understand. Okay, I wasn't clear, okay.
Okay? And a point of information, so let's say you're debating, and you want to get clarification on how to make a motion or something of that nature, how to proceed, this is what you want to do, you can ask the Chair for a point of information. So that is a procedure. You can say, Madam Chair, any point of information, how do I go about doing this, how about going now? So in other words, you don't have to remain stuck as a person, you can ask a procedure for point of information.
And if I don't know?
If you don't, we ask.
You're at your bar.
We've got, you've got it right here. And then the other, the other thing is, it's proper, it's a point of order, you can say point of order, and that really asks the Chair to rule on whether or not you're following policy or procedures, okay? There are things that are going on that are not, that we have adopted as our own policies or our procedures, are we following our procedures, and the Chair will rule on that. And then point-
I have a question about, you know, I've seen several times this past year where point of order was used during public comment. Is that appropriate? I don't know what the rule says.
Well, I think probably the intent there was whether or not we have, we have a policy on public comments. And whether or not that policy is being followed, and the Chair would rule on it.
Because, may I speak again?
So you need to say what your point of order is.
Because my understanding that this is, when we meet as a Board, it's a meeting of the Boards, the Boards taking, and so we could be talking about something, and then maybe somebody in the audience might offer an opinion. Is that, is that permissible with Roberts Rules? I was, I just don't know, I'm asking the question.
It normally is not, unless the Chair makes an exception.
Okay, you may make an exception. Yeah, no, I mean, sometimes it's helpful, I recognize that. So I just didn't know, I was trying to understand what the procedure was. That was a question I had.
They have no right to make comments or anything, but sometimes it's both polite to listen to them as well as informational. But if it's something unpleasant or directed at people, you shouldn't decide that, then I certainly would say that it's under our policy of-
Thank you.
And what about, if someone's giving public comment, does the Board go in and have conversation with the member giving the public comment, or is that just a public comment?
It is a public comment.
Period, there's no dialogue that goes on with that.
I would think that the Chair would say, thank you for your opinion.
Normally-
Talk to the superintendent or whatever.
Yeah, I think what Maria's saying is that you meet in the public to conduct public's business. You're not having a public forum. There is an opportunity for the public to speak, and most of the times I've seen it's usually, maybe there's something that's come out, they want to make the Board aware about, many times it's about the agenda items that are there, so that before you take a vote and make a decision, you're hearing some public comments. The point of appeal, well, even though the Chair rules on all the things, as always, it checks the balance, okay? So if you disagree with the ruling of the Chair, you can make a point of appeal. You appeal the Board's decision. And there is a second, it's debatable, and a majority rules. So even though she's going to rule with a nine-hand.
We could take it or take it.
There is an opportunity if you feel there's something completely out of whack, all right? And then the last part is, you don't see it happen very often, sometimes we do, I mean, it's just, if it's a point of personal privilege, if you feel there's something in your room that's disturbing the meeting, noise, it's very uncomfortable, you know, it's hot or something that you need, you need to address, something that needs to be addressed, you can bring that up. Point of personal privilege, you just say, hey, could someone just check here, could someone, I mean, or could we just see if we could, I can't hear, people converse, stuff like that, and the Chair will rule on it. So these are just some very, it's, you know, I'm no parliamentarian, but I just thought it might be nice to know how to do our business and everything. So you can bring this with you and look at it, and there it is, you can check it here if you want. And Maria says she's, she's quite familiar with this, and we'll take a look at it.
They're going to be a poll quiz.
And I have included some brief comments, text for you to read, I'm not going to repeat that. All right, the next section is under Communications. There, if someone wants to comment, there has been a process to deal with public correspondence. We do have a procedure where all public correspondence is kept in this little three-ring binder in my office, and we do have quite a few people, it's a very popular booklet, and people come in all day and look at this. So what we try to do is, I say, well, if you get any emails or things that go to Corbin to hand to us, we try to put them all in a public document, so that's there for the review, and it's kind of outlined. And there's a procedure here, if something comes to the Board, what to do. It was outlined. And then there's this communication audit that was done way back in 2010. I don't know if Krista can speak to that, I don't know what the genesis is.
The genesis of this communications audit was that we felt we weren't communicating properly with the public, and so we asked, we charged our communications committee to come up with more effective ways that we could get information out to the public. We felt that there wasn't enough response to letters that were coming into the Board, there wasn't, there was various things where we felt that the Board could communicate better. It was sufficient, it just wasn't good enough for our liking. So we asked the communications committee to come back with some recommendations as to policies and procedures, and things that, and best practices that we could do, which they researched extensively, they put a ton of time into this document, in order to make things better. So then the document was handed over to the policy committee, the Board charged the policy committee with making amendments to the policies to answer these issues, which we did. So that's all been done. And not to say that we can't further work on this document, but that's where we are right now.
Okay.
I have a question about correspondence in general. We have a, it's in our, I guess, you know what, let's say, I guess it's part of the discussion about the agenda. And I, we have a practice of summarizing correspondence. Is that, is that something we have to do legally, or because it's all there in the S A U?
I don't know, I mean, it's been a past practice, it was something you can discuss when you-
Maybe that's part of our agenda discussion.
It's been very different over the two years that I've been on the Board. Some people say, we receive 14 correspondences. And then other people read like a sentence summary of every single correspondence.
I guess it's your decision when you review the agenda, if you want to make a comment, that all public correspondence is available at the Office, I mean, it's up to you. I don't think there's anything written that has to be, you have to review all of those-
There's no state law that says we have.
It's up to you to discuss. Okay, trying to keep on my timeline, Sue Caswell is on with the budget.
Okay, I put together a draft schedule for, believe it or not, fiscal year 14 budget. And actually, it's all driven by the dates that are set forth by the law. The second page of your documents there will show you, this was last year's timeline for March 2012 meeting, we'll have another one that will be revised, it's not out there yet. But basically, because you're a March meeting, your voting date will be March 12th next year. So I kind of work backwards from that to see where we need to be in the process to make sure we're ready for that date. You're required to have, it's two sessions, you have your deliberative session, you have your ballot voting, and also you have a public hearing. So I won't go through a lot of that, but in the second page, you'll see the RSAs that govern those dates and why they are the way they are. As far as those dates, you have some leeway with your deliberative, you have some leeway with your public hearing, I just picked dates that were close to what you had last year. I know this year we had some question about whether or not to change deliberative to a Saturday. So those are all things that we can flush out once we get started with the process. But that's basically the dates, I just chose the same dates for this next round of budgeting. I just go through them, we, you know, we start as a leadership team in May. As Lee mentioned, we like to have some goals from the School Board. I had put down June, but I noticed that you have it in the calendars, maybe July or August. But basically, we can have some goals to start our process, we have to start very early. And as you can see, we usually roll out the budget, well, last year was the first year here, but in October, we roll out the budget, the preliminary draft budget for fiscal year 14. And then below that, I picked, generally what I do is take Wednesdays, so for the most part, your October and November Wednesdays are going to be booked with either School Board members or budget committee, budget sessions, work sessions. So that's what I did this, in this particular calendar, I picked the Wednesdays in October and November to discuss the budget. If that's the process you want to follow, that's the way I fill the calendar with dates. This next page, of course, you see there's that Senate Bill to Town and School Timeline, there'll be a new one for the next year. This calendar here, this flow chart here was, it was here when I arrived, it just kind of outlines the same kind of thing as the calendar shows, how your cycle begins and what, what happens in different months in regards to budget, when the tax rate is set, when reports are due. If you have any questions on that, I'll just, if you have any questions, certainly we can go over it at a different time, but it gives you some of the basics. And then, of course, the ultimate goal is to develop a budget and present a school warrant. And there's our 2012 school warrant. Questions?
I have a question.
No, I'm going fast.
This is probably more complicated than, maybe, but what is, what is a School Board goal? We have to have goals by June 1st, I mean, how specific, how, how would those, what would you, what do you get from the School Board at that point?
Well, it varies, and sometimes School Boards will say, we want zero tax increase, we want zero budget increase. Or they just say, no more than 2 percent, no more than 5 percent. I mean, it's up to you as a Board how you want to set your goals for budget.
Some years we have like this many Board goals for the budget, Board budget goals, and last year we had a sentence. So sometimes it's, you know-
Very specific.
We're like, we want foreign language, and we want this, and we want that, and we want this and that, and da-da-da-da-da. And then last year it was just a statement, so.
It depends on the direction that the Board wants to go with, with your goals. Any other questions in regards to those?
And this is just one of your goals.
That doesn't mean that in the past, they haven't set goals that are long-term, like for instance, I think-
Our Board goals are usually like-
Board goals really could include budget goal, could weave into budget goals. I think with, I'm thinking of the foreign language program, that was kind of a program that you would roll out over a course of maybe two or three years, so that can, can roll into the budget process, too. Again, that's the warrant that's developed after the process. The next page is the form that I think you signed at the last Board meeting, that is your authority to approve manifests. We prepare in the business office, all of the bills are paid through the business office, we prepare a manifest, and they're brought to each Board meeting for signature for your approval. And if you'd like, we have all of those invoices, I can bring them to meetings for you to review, that doesn't always work very well, and they're also available at the S A U office, generally after 10 o'clock on Tuesdays. So you're welcome to come into the S A U office and review invoices if you'd like to.
Individually, right?
Individually.
What happens if we get there at the same time? Like I go, and then Maria shows up?
They could go into separate rooms.
But it's the same basket of documents. We're going to have, I mean, I'm just saying, it's likely to happen, you know?
You know, it's-
In my former life, we had three months and three months, the Chair plus three others were a subcommittee to review. And then after three, three months, the Chair was stuck, but the three other people in, that way, those four could sign, or the other three could trust the four that had said, we have looked through it. So that's one way of doing it.
Whatever works.
But they were always looked at by four people.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir. And not to forget, our mission is education and learning, and as you know, in Hampshire has adopted the Common Core, and Danielle is going to review with you the work that she's doing, Phyllis and the administrators and staff with curriculum.
So we are, just so you know, to get you up to speed, we are in our last year of a three-year plan for district initiatives. So we, three years ago, we met in the summer as a leadership team, and we came up with four goals, one being data use and analysis, communication, raising proficiency levels of individual learners, and continuing to refine curriculum and instructional practices. And we set goals for each of those over a three-year period, and then we report on those goals, usually near the end of the school year. So this will conclude those, that three-year plan. And what we'll be doing this summer is looking at, coming up with another three-year plan of initiatives or goals. And one that you will find will definitely be the Common Core, and how we will be transitioning to the Common Core state standards. But we could also look at, I mean, people just, the way we do it is we come in a leadership retreat, and we say, okay, what are the goals, what are the things we need to do? And then we plan backwards and say, okay, what professional development days are we going to need to- going to need to roll this out, is it going to be early release, is it going to be building-based, is it going to be district-based?" And we plan the school calendar in that same timeframe. What is helpful is if the school board has goals that the district could incorporate into their initiatives, so it hasn't always worked out that way, where, you know, the board might have their separate goals, and the district leadership team has their separate goals, and then you're trying to do all these goals and not in concert with each other. So if you are meeting and you are looking at your goals, I've worked under that, where we've taken those goals, one of the goals used to be feedback for staff and students, so we incorporated that into our district initiatives, and set time aside to make sure we hit those board goals that were set. If you're also talking about strategic plan, that would be a great time to bring everyone together and look at a strategic plan that moves forward, and so we're all working on the same set of goals at the same time. And of course, we would, you know, a leadership team would come up to you and say, you know, Common Core's got to be one of those, but foreign language, world language could be one, progress reporting, and, and again, power school, and way you analyze data, I mean, all those things could be thrown into a pot and decided, "Okay, this is what we're going to work on, you know, going forward." So that's, I just wanted to give you a background on how the leadership team kind of works and sets their goals, and then how we should work together with the board, so that we're not going in different directions on that. So you'll hear more about how we've met the, these four goals, and we'll report it out on the website, and we'll report it out to you, I think in June is when that's coming. And we have a team meeting to talk specifically about Common Core next year, and lay out professional development timeframes for Common Core, too. Any questions on that?
No question. Danielle, so we just briefly looked at the board goals that we had been working on, do you feel, I mean, granted, this is going to be coming to conclusion, but do you feel we have, I haven't looked at both documents carefully right now, but do you feel there's some good alignment now, or is it what we've missed along?
We looked specifically at your, where, where's your board, or the, yeah, where are your board goals? Is it meetings?
It's under, there's a board goals tab, you might not have it.
What do you mean?
I think it was added after the fact.
Yeah, I don't...
Yeah, we have a separate tab, it's, it's not, it's black ink, not green.
Yeah, I don't have that, right? Okay, so.
Okay. Well, I don't mean to, I was just curious if...
I think sustainability will be the same, because I think we're also part of that, so that coincides well, and the strategic plan would be great, that's got to, you know, that's coming together with the new superintendent, I think that's another really logical place for all of us to get together and work on specific goals. And then...
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the communication part is probably, you know, I guess communication can be a pretty broad goal for all of it.
This is an incomplete document.
Yeah.
So probably...
And I would say, you know, if you kept it three to four goals, that's, that's about, that's respectable for what you can get done and feel like you can do.
Yeah.
So this might be a little bit more than you'd want to try to do in a year, but, yeah, and then if, really, I think the strategic plan is the way to go, is to just put it all, wrap it all up in that umbrella, it'll be good. Good?
Thanks.
Okay.
All right, moving right along, I'm just going to talk just a little bit about a couple policies. One is that probably coming before you for revision will be this BDB, because we do not have a secretary that's a point of authority, so we'll probably be looking at revising this one, we do have a recording secretary that's employed, but that language...
Which tab are you in?
Are there policies?
On the policy? Oh, I skipped, I skipped, okay, sorry about that. I just, I included in here all the information we have on strategic planning, the work that took place two years ago, and also included the vision and educational philosophy that was adopted on February 16th by the board, and, which should serve as a planning piece for strategic thinking and planning. And going on to the policies, that BDB is one that we're going to have to take a look at and revise. Under BHEA, you have a policy that's there that you, I urge you all to read, it's what, it's what the attorney, Barrett Christina, talked about, and our policy regarding school board use of email, okay? And it was put together last year, I urge you to take a look at that, and I think the simple way of looking at this is that emails are used sparingly, you use it to receive and to request information. Board member communication with staff, I think as the Barrett reference, is that your line of communication to staff is through me, the superintendent, that I'm going to communicate to staff, so this prevents you getting into the role of when you're visiting a school, asking someone to do something, putting you, because you have authority as a board, not as an individual. You're responsible for budget planning, there's a policy on that, and complaints about school personnel, that's KEB. What we try to do is this, is encourage, I think, again, the attorney referred to that, complaints, we try to handle complaints at the lowest level possible, so if you get, as an elected official, complaint or concern, encourage the person who has an issue to communicate with the teacher or the staff at the lowest level, if not, it's resolved there, goes to the principal, and if it's not resolved there, it comes to me, and if it's not resolved, it comes to the school board, but you should exhaust those levels before it comes to your level. And I guess that concludes where we're at, I'm trying to close you one hour, a bit fast, but, you know, in trying to put a booklet together, there's just so much to explain, and I don't know where to end, but at least this gives you a framework to go back and a reference, okay? And like I said, there's a learning curve, particularly coming on as a school board member, but there's something to go back to, to refer to, and thank you for your patience, I know three hours is about all you can take, and I'm trying to be sensitive to that fact. So, I'm all done, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So you need a motion?
Do I have more motion to adjourn?
Roof to adjourn.
Anybody opposed to adjourn? All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you.